Morning. Oh, thanks.
It's nine o'clock. We'll call this first economic commission meeting to order. We'll start the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions? I'd like to do one with, if we had discussion on, the wage bump ups through sheriff's in the road department. I'm not expecting a decision, but I would just like to take a couple minutes to talk about it. And do that under other business.
Do we want to stricken the commission conflict of interest policy until Jean is back?
Okay. Any other additions or correction or whatever?
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve and a second Travis.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Liza.
Aye.
All vote aye. Um, approval of the minutes.
I'll move to approve the September eighteenth minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Jamie and Travis seconding. Jamie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
All vote aye also. I'm not going to go into, uh,
We've got two minutes, that's special.
Oh, we got,
Yeah, they're just one pages that we did that special meeting on.
Twenty-third.
Yeah, zoning case.
This was for the eighteen.
The first one was the regular meeting, the eighteenth?
Yep, nine o'clock. And then there was another one right after that.
We got the one on the twenty-third.
Just a question on the second one. It says October second, special meeting minutes. I don't think it should have October in there, right?
Okay, okay, so you're looking at the nine twenty-one? Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, nine twenty-eight. Actually, that's what Jean named it because you guys were talking about the October second meeting. That's why I put it up there. He said, name it October second special meeting. Because you guys were talking about the October second. And if you want it changed, I will change it. Just, yeah. But can I get approval on the first and nine AM one? That was the zoning case one and the wages on the highway soup.
Your motion on the one through the September twenty-third with, um, highway department?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Travis? Or Jamie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
All vote aye also. Okay, the one on,
Yeah, the October second. Okay, so, special meeting. Yeah.
Do we, we have a motion to accept as presented or do you want to change?
I see what you're saying and,
Unless you got it better than it. I just wanted it to be distinguished.
Regarding October second?
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah.
That's what I would change. I'll move to approve what the changes of special meeting regarding October second.
Got it.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Jamie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
All vote aye also. Okay, now we got them all.
You did, thank you.
All right, uh, Jean's usually got a long deal that he says, but we go through all the bills and it'll take it about a half hour or so, so.
Are we, top one, are we holding this till Charlie comes?
Right, and I actually gave you guys a copy of it.
Right, is Charlie coming?
As far as I know. I haven't talked to him this morning.
I haven't talked to him either.
As far as I know, he's coming.
So if you want, like he always says, if you want to get a cup of coffee to drink or a bathroom, feel free.
And if you haven't signed in, there's a sign in sheet there too.
Yeah, we have a sign in sheet up here. Thank you. Just to fill out the meeting last night? Okay. Um, I don't know, I left it by, nine. Um, it was like done, but, I mean, probably done, it was probably done closer to eight, but then people, realized that was like, you know, pushing off this whole side for the line or, it's a little way, I think, for a long time.
That's the one we're holding, yeah.
I'll give you a feeling of names. No? They did say they had talked to both commissions on the line, give some insurance and the only contents. Any of us had his one email with a flyer and Jen had, they got called out on that. They got called out on that. Hey, Rick, did they clean out three more cattle guards or this is the same as last time? Do you know? Three more?
Yeah, they did them up by twenty oh five.
Yeah, okay. What? They're like scree, like, pressed on with their hat or something.
I was wondering if we were using a local place.
Yeah, that's, um, the boutique in Beale, yeah. Um, I think, Molly's got, we could take that one and curtain out and like, I'm sorry, they're all in the beginning. Carmen?
Yes.
With these new credit cards, I overheard the conversation yesterday, but we weren't supposed to be able to like charge sales tax or whatever.
Well, it's, go ahead.
Are we getting that figured out with the department heads as to how to do that?
Yeah, they, they know how to do it before they got the card. They had it in the policy. They have to, not, there should be no, none of that, but it takes some time to, they have to get the non-exempt information to the people there.
Right.
That's what has to be done, and I know they know how to do it. And, and they said, they would do it next time. And I did talk to Ashley to her to get the sheriff's officer on Amazon, non-exempt. Then that way she, you know, she can do it and she won't have an issue. But she's the one now that has to go back and make sure that they get the information they need to take those taxes off. And then she should get a refund on her car.
Okay.
And I believe that hers and then Alice had one or something, but she said to Wyatt, we talked about it, so, that dollar general, she's just gotta go in there and give them the information they need.
Yes. So this one with Kathy's claim, um, both of her receipts have tax on it, so that's one of them that's gonna be working on getting that back or?
And that was from who?
Kathy?
I wondered if she should pay for it herself now on the credit card?
Kathy Johnson. Yeah. I like this one. Their number's gonna tax it here somewhere. It has two things on it, and then that says,
Yeah. Um, I say, we'll have to work on it.
Okay.
Yeah, no, and we're with you on that because, I talked to Ashley and, yeah, we just, and they know how to do it. It's, it takes time and,
Do you want a note put on this to contact Kathy or?
We're well aware of all this.
Okay.
So, but, you know, just having you guys make sure,
Okay.
with us on all that.
Okay. Hard to tell, it just said Chris, but that's because Chris right here, right? Okay. Just wondering.
Unless something came through.
Cause those were out ordered in one bay.
Those are the standard issues, where's that one that gets the shoes from the certain brand?
I think it was between Blackers.
So there is a, what, officer gets a thing?
As best as they don't.
Okay. That's what I might, I might just, if there's any, I might have a chance of it. Whatever, if there's a choice.
Can you get to the signing?
Thank you.
First right here. At this point?
You look through this right here.
Yeah, I bet, like, it's just so much.
I don't know if we could afford all the tabs. We'd have to put on there if we had to mark everyone for you.
The first time, probably.
Pete Travis?
Yeah.
You're gonna be the one opening.
I can't, yeah.
Cause you're gonna recuse yourself.
I won't have to recuse myself on, on any of the bidding stuff, cause it's not.
Oh, okay.
It's not a contract with interstate, it's a contract with contractor, so. It'd be just like any road project.
Cause it seemed like Charlie always opened them.
Yeah, and if Charlie's here, he can open them, but I don't know if he's coming. I hope he does, cause we got that one.
Yeah. He was going to, yeah, and I think, yeah, yep, it's like, separated out and then you guys have copies.
Yeah.
Charlie said he was gonna be here.
Okay.
Who could it be? I've got my guesses.
I'll give you two, but you only need one.
Probably, yeah.
Like a lot of these have sales tax on them?
Have what?
Sales tax on them.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean,
Someone gave me a question, like a card won't even allow states to charge.
I don't know. I don't, I've never heard of that, so.
I agree, I just, because it's a state card or whatever. So it's from the state. Yeah, it doesn't really matter.
Having a little information with you, tell them. And that's what I'm doing anyway.
Cashier, you call them, you know, yeah, you fill them in form, or you have them fill out form every time.
Yeah.
It's either lease sale or government, or whatever, unless they gotta charge you company.
Then you have to go, but you have to go to customer service to do your processing that, and that's why I feel shields.
A lot of shields probably, and there was a different screen, and you'd have to tell the cashier to order.
Right.
Cause it has to be done before you start the transaction.
Yeah.
Carmen?
Yes.
Do you have?
What's that?
Todd, two, three.
Oh, yeah, okay, I am making it up.
Yeah, if you could just make a list and make sure.
And I do appreciate.
Yeah. I know, like, for me, for the state, I have a copy of ours that I have to carry around with me, that I have to use every time.
And actually, there's even the state exempt on the card.
Yeah.
So it's like, and that is part of the cost, they signed the document when they got that card, before they got it, they signed the document. But, see now, Todd does not have a card, not one at all.
Yeah, so maybe make sure he has the tax exempt information, so that way he knows every time. Yeah.
Yeah, um, they have to do, they usually send it to, for, when I went to Rabbit City, they had to send it to.
Ours just has it already, like it just, cause we have a whole bunch really gone at a time.
Could almost be something that would be done at registration or.
Yeah, I usually say that, like, government rate tax exempt, is what I remind them of, and I.
It's just usually like the hotel staff has to be trained in how to.
Right.
Yes.
If, that was my dilemma, is they didn't know what to do.
Yeah, mine's usually pretty.
And Gwen and I both went through it, like, four years after I got away.
Yeah, like, well, I'd spend twenty years, but. Every time you sat there, you had to see where it was going, if you had to charge tax for it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Always order it's received.
I'm going to approve the bills when you guys are done.
Getting closer.
Yeah.
Do you wanna, in your motion, you wanna, we excluded that one, Jamie.
Oh, we did, for Charlie?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, to exclude, do we wanna just postpone, I can withdraw my motion and just postpone until Charlie gets here.
I think it's smoothly.
I'll withdraw it.
Did you get that, Carmen? She's, she's withdrawn her motion, we'll wait until, um, Charlie gets here, so that we just do it in one motion.
Finish quickly and then we don't have to move on.
Yeah.
Oh, you didn't catch that when I said that?
Yeah. That's what, really.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, we'll wait with the completion of the, the vouchers until the highway department, so the next one will be zoning case twenty-four oh eight oh four with, uh, Jen.
Okay, this is an application from Jared and Sherri Meiser, approval of variance to build in addition to an existing structure. Four feet from the side property line rather than the required ten feet setback required by zoning regulations in our residential zoning district. Subject parcel is under fees of being on Lake Kapolea and is located approximately thirteen miles north of the present. Legally described as block three, block one, Lake Valley Estate subdivision, West County. P and Z recommended approval September nineteenth contingent on assignment agreement from the Amory Landowner, Mark Stigler. My husband did contact me, they have decided not to ask for assigned agreement.
That was gonna be my question, if I, what the neighbors thought.
Looking for it.
Do we have a motion to accept or reject?
Uh, for, go ahead.
You said P and Z did recommend?
Things without a signed agreement.
With contingent on.
Yeah.
So if we can get it on discussion, I'll move to approve zoning case twenty-four oh eight oh four.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Was there any objection to the, by the neighbor, just unwilling to sign, or?
He just sent me an email back saying that they decided not to ask Mark for some year I meant, so. I don't even think they, from his own business, it's not like they talked to him, so.
And they're not here. Sherri and Jerry?
And Mark's not here either?
This was tabled once at P and Z because they didn't show up to the first meeting that was on the agenda, cause that was some of the conditions or concerns that the. Planning and zoning board had was that, you know, had the neighbor been contacted, was the neighbor in agreement? Obviously, the discussion on the property was that there's a substantial slope near this property line, um, they didn't think it was buildable, however, we have setbacks for a reason. And when, when asking for variance, it's important to make sure that it's kosher with the neighbor and.
I guess I'd like, either signed agreement or at least a tax. Oh, like somebody here.
So we can table it until we get a letter, or?
Do you want to reach out to them?
Again, again.
Yeah, I mean, we were pretty clear at planning and zoning that we wanted, you know, unacceptable from the neighbor.
Yeah, I just don't think they want to talk to the neighbor, so.
That, yeah, that doesn't, doesn't negate our policies or requests.
Maybe you could just get it in writing from them, you know, or, or that email or something.
Yeah, I have that email, that says that they decided not to ask Mark for assigned agreement, that's all he said.
Well, you wanna, you wanna table it, or you wanna vote on it, or vote based on it?
Yeah, if you wanna move forward or table it, one or the other, I guess if they're not doing, don't represent it, I'm like, I would just deny it.
And since Jen has that email from them saying they're not gonna do it, I'm, I'm prepared to vote on it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion? Travis?
Nay.
Jamie?
Nay.
Liza?
Nay.
Although nay also, motion denied. Okay, the next one, twenty-four oh nine oh one.
This is an application from Michael and Mattel Mettler for approval of conditional use for nonpart residence within the neighbor called and sold in Mercer County zoning district. The subject parcel is located approximately thirteen miles north of Zap. The parcel is approximately six point four two acres in size and is described as tract A in the northeast corner, located in section six, township one forty-five north, range eighty-eight west of the fifth and Mercer County. The parcel is an existing exempt farmstead, P and Z recommended approval on September nineteen.
I'm going to approve zoning case twenty-four nine oh one.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Although. Okay, six thirty-six.
Temporary permit number six thirty-six, this is an application from Basin Electric for a temporary outdoor material storage yard. The subject parcel is located in the northeast corner, northeast corner of section twenty, township one forty-four north, range eighty-four west. The parcel is owned by Basin Electric. I answered because I have any questions, amazing.
Who is?
Right.
Go ahead, yeah. Want to, any presentation on it, or just a lay down yard?
Nope, just lay down yard, just give more room.
Is this where we currently, like, they have, is this a current one already? Across from the old VPA? No.
Was this one at P and Z, or has it just come straight to us?
Nope, it's straight to us.
Okay, I was gonna say, I don't remember it at the meeting, so. I'll move to approve zoning case six thirty-six.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Is there a certain time period on this?
Well, it'll expire in the year, like, with the rest of them.
Okay, so then it'll be renewed.
Thirty-first, so they'll have to renew if it's longer than that.
All right, Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Although. Next one is in six twenty-two, I'm twenty, well, you wanna do them separate?
Rick, I'm gonna step on for this. Um, yeah, Ramsey Hill is, that's where she's, oh, she is requesting the transfer permit number six twenty-two to six twenty-three from Buffalo Sands to them. Number six twenty-two is for the Hall Road in the west half, in section fourteen, township one forty-four, range eighty-six west. They purchased, um, the sound line to Buffalo Hill Sands earlier this year, the permit will expire December thirty-first this year, so then they'd come back in December twenty with a permit for twenty twenty-five.
I'll move to approve temporary use permit six twenty-two.
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
Uh, discussion I have, so in the transfer, they take basically ownership of everything, and any, like, violations or non-conformity becomes their responsibility. Just making sure I understand it correctly, so they're essentially accepting all the conditions that were in existence.
Any other discussion? Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Although. Motion is carried.
And number six twenty-three is for the Aterit Materials Operations in the northeast corner, section twenty-three, township one forty-four, range eighty-six west.
And this is the same thing that Ramsey has taken it over, and that they're gonna assume all responsibility included in these conditions?
Correct.
We have more?
At the end of the year, the rest of them.
Okay. I'll move to accept temporary use permit number six twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Although.
Please want to go back over this file?
Sure.
Thanks, Jen.
Okay, next one is, uh, Veteran Service Office, my reader.
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
This email has been sent to you, uh, but it, it was sent at nine eighteen, so you haven't seen it, this is.
I did.
We actually got a copy, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, though, Ron.
Hey, me, I wonder what the future of our Mercer County VA service office is.
I couldn't quite hear you, start over.
I want, I was wondering what the future of our Mercer County Veterans Service Office is, the future, what's gonna happen to it, I heard you might be, uh, doing some changes.
Well, we hired, uh, Justin McClellan as our veteran office, uh, we will maintain our office, there will be, I believe, wasn't your office gonna be made here, here also?
Yeah, she just has that, where they have to call in to make appointments.
Yeah.
And stuff, but she would be available to them otherwise and stuff, and she'll have quite, quite a few outreach events, too, I know she has one already scheduled, uh, I believe it's the twenty-fourth. At Cobblestone, too, for them. To come in and attend.
Will be somebody here? There will be somebody here?
Of some, uh, she would have to schedule an appointment for that, but she would set up certain days is what I understand, is what she's working toward right now.
And she was also looking at setting up times at the local mines and plants where a lot of our existing veterans actually work at.
That'd be more than two days a week?
I think it just depends on the demand of the community as far as how often she would be here, from what I understand.
So if a veteran needs something that's first of the month and there's only one or two, then they gotta wait till last month when there's a dozen of them before he comes or what?
Nope, you just call to make an appointment with her. And then she will arrange when she would come to meet with you.
Wait on Tuesday and Wednesday?
I don't know if she has specific days set yet, from my understanding. You'd have to call and ask Jessica herself. Because I don't know what she's completely figured out yet as to what would be the most appropriate to fit with the most people. What's the reason?
Reason that we don't have our own service officer, Mr. Ron Crowley here.
Well, Ron retired. Ron retired.
Ron retired.
I know he's retiring him, but, I mean, there was somebody before him. So there can be somebody after him.
And that's Jessica.
Yep.
What?
That's Jessica. We hired a VSO.
From Dickinson.
Yeah.
Yep.
Many of our veterans are already there.
We gotta go to Dickinson.
Never said they had to go to Dickinson. She was coming up here.
The rumor was that, you know, she wasn't going to come up here.
But that's the problem with the rumor, it's not factual.
She's planning on coming.
She, she needed to.
And she will come to the veterans' home if they call and schedule the appointment. She will come to your home if you need her to.
Wonderful, I need company once in a while.
Yeah.
She's, she came highly recommended.
Yeah, I, I just saw here where it says she's going to, you know, be in the coming. We didn't have that information before. Uh, she is a very good veteran service officer, very good. It says here that I send veterans to her and I get one, I never do her amount. So I, or that veteran map, so I don't know where she came up with that.
No, but many of our local veterans do see her already currently.
Yeah. There's ones that live on the other side of the county, sixty miles away.
No.
Not necessarily.
Was there Dickinson that is there?
No.
No.
I know many right here in, in Stanton that see her, so.
My, my, my opinion of what she had discussed is like, if there was a couple of you in Pick City, for example, is she would probably not come to your home, but she would have arranged to meet you at the city hall or someplace like that where, but, I mean, she would come to, I'm just using that as an example, she would go to Pick City. You know, she's not going to be limited to just the office in Stanton. She would go to Buell, she would, like she had, like you mentioned earlier, she has a, one appointment set up for people to come to the Cobblestone.
Well, and she's met Sundays at Fanatics. She's met, she's been up here in the county already meeting long before she was even hired up here because our, some local veterans do see her.
Well, that's good to hear.
Yeah, so, and if you need her contact information, we're happy to help you with that.
I believe I already have that.
Okay.
Okay.
So, okay, well, we're going to be taken care of and we ain't going to get shoved under the rug.
No, absolutely not.
Yeah, no. Veterans are extremely important to us and that's why we chose, yeah, and that's why we chose Jessica because she came so highly recommended from so many veterans that have already worked with her.
And there was, there was only one Mercer County applicant.
You might ask, how old is she?
Well, we didn't ask her.
And I don't, that's not something that we can actually ask.
Is she going to retire next year?
No, I don't believe so.
No, I don't believe so, sir.
Okay.
Fair question, though, on that.
Thank you for the information. I love your homework if I need it.
Good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we got a couple of minutes. We're waiting for Charlie at the Hyrum Department. We really want to go down to Fair Board appointment for Gary Canal for the, uh, represent Mercer County at the State Fair.
I will move to appoint Gary Canal, um, for the State Fair Board.
I'll second.
Is any discussion? Seeing none, Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Although aye also.
Rick, do you want to take like a five minute?
Take a five minute break.
I was going to give it about two more minutes, but we can take a break now if you want.
Right.
Yeah, we'll take a recess.
Yeah.
Break until ten, is that right?
Okay. Till ten? Yeah.
Liza?
Yep.
Oh, totally fine. Thanks for checking on it.
So this, um, Gary Canal, you guys grouped to what?
He, what is this, Mercer County State Fair?
Represented. State Fair Board representative.
Right.
And then like, uh, what's the, like, the extension office? They do one, um, somebody else, that's how they are doing that, just two people. But they, this is only one.
You need just the one, yes, and last year we did.
One we did, three we did.
Okay, yep, okay, good.
This is the way this was written.
Yes. Yeah, well, I don't think so.
Yeah, there is, but I mean, I don't think there's a meeting there that's, okay, let's go.
Yeah, that's what I love about you. Yes.
Here? I got the meeting room open over there. Yes, I got three. Three, three. No, four, you're right, I got four, sorry.
Little Charlie, huh? Special Assessment Public Hearing.
I think we should do the bid opening first.
Which one?
The bid opening first.
That's what it looks like.
Once that's ready, we just.
Just getting in this morning. Carmen, do you have a sticky? I do.
Well, I'll give them a little more time. No answers. All right, we'll call the meeting back to order. Uh, we suggested we'll do the bid opening first?
Yep.
Um, okay, now the public hearing part of it, we didn't get anybody.
I think we open the bids and then open a public hearing after the bids because it would be in protest.
Because I thought we had to have the public hearing first because it's a, you know, it's something against this assessment. And then we were going to have the opening of the bids and then you guys were okay to open the bids? I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, Travis.
I, I think I would open the bids and then based on the bids, then open the public hearings so that you could have for or against it based on the bidding.
I'm okay with that, I mean, I'm just.
Okay.
So, we're going to have Travis open it, Travis, and look.
Got the letter, very, very sharp.
So first one we got is from Knife River Corporation.
Travis, don't you have to have the meeting, the party against it first?
That's what we were trying to figure out, if we had to have it first, have to have that first? Okay, then we'll do that first. Go ahead, Nick.
All right, we'll start with the open meeting for the Special Assessment District Public Hearing Meeting. If anybody wants to start on the opposition or, or, uh...
In either way, whoever wants to start would need to come up to the podium and acknowledge who they are and then let us know what their intentions are.
Thanks, Charlie.
The man.
I could have really used some donuts today, Charlie.
So there's no opposition or, or, or to the, we can close the, the public hearing and open the bids then?
Yep. Hey, Charlie, do you want to open these bids or do you want me to do it?
I can open if you want me to.
That would be great, and then, um, once we have the bids, if you could do a calculation on them and, um, then we can decide if we have worked, yep.
Sure.
Yeah, that's why we said perfect timing.
All right. This, uh, first bid, Knife River Corporation. Okay, so for Knife River, total base bid is in the amount of six hundred ninety-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty cents. Six nine two, three seven one, point eight zero.
There's no alternates. Uh, engineer estimate I want to see was like, off the top of my head, it was like six fifty-six, six hundred and fifty-six thousand.
And the next bid was from Northern Improvement. Check their documents here. Okay. And Northern Improvements bid, base bid in the amount of five hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. Five eight six, two three two, point five zero. Third bid is from Bechtold paving. Third bid is from Bechtold Paving. And Bechtold Paving, base bid in the amount of six hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and ninety cents. Six seven zero, seven eight zero, point nine zero. And the final bid from Strata Corporation. And Strata, base bid in the amount of six hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and ten cents. Six one eight, six two zero, point one zero. So I can check the math on all. Verify apparent low bidder and, which I believe was Northern. Northern, yep.
Uh, we would do that after he reviews it. We can do it, accept it after he reviews it.
Right.
Yeah. We gotta verify the numbers, but if we could talk about the, the other thing on the agenda before Charlie steps away, that miscellaneous patching repairs?
Yeah. Yep, so I have the, uh, payment estimate prepared for commission approval to Bechtold Paving for the patching repair work that was done this year. I believe all of you received copies of that, is that correct?
Yes.
The total amount to be paid out is in the amount of one hundred and three thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-four cents for the miscellaneous patching repair work that was budgeted into place this year, so. I would be, open to any questions and seeking approval from the commission to make that payment.
Do you have a motion to approve or deny?
I'll move to approve the pay estimate for miscellaneous patching repairs.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any more discussion on it? Questions?
This is the final bill and retaining all that stuff, so it'd be just, this'd be the only time we'd have to...
All included.
And this is in the budget already?
Yeah, we had a budget of one hundred thousand, so we were a skosh over it, but yeah. We got quite a bit of mix put down this year. The spots that were passed were on County Route fifteen, um, the cabin site, one road, I believe, and then twenty-seven south of Hazen on the shore. It was quite a big shoulder that was patched down.
That was damaged from the flood.
Yep.
Damage from the flooding from last spring.
Oh, any other discussion on it? Seeing none Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
What about I also?
And I would move to approve the bills as presented.
Any discussion on that then? Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
What about I also for that one? Okay. You gotta do your calculations and come back, huh?
Yep, I can step out in front of the room and then come back.
Well, then we'll move on with, uh, well, until you come back, we'll just move on with Allison at that point. We're a little ahead of schedule, but...
Is Allison here?
Allison was here. Now she's gone though.
Jamie's gonna go.
We can do the, uh, we can talk about the auditor's office, Tyler's office.
Okay, I just wanted to update you guys. The training's going well, but they're doing it right in between everything, so there's gonna be overtime. And we talked to Todd about it, I mean, we can't get off it. And the only time we get these scheduled in, we have to take these trainings. So we are scheduled, you know, we're on track with turning that software over in January. So, I, I'm just letting you guys know that we're, we are gonna have a little overtime on that.
And the overtime would be from the employees?
Yeah, like Gwen and Mark.
Right.
And we talked to Todd about this too and we're thinking when they start their training too, like the tax assessors, they, they're probably gonna end up with some overtime too. It's just hard to say what, what it's gonna be. But you gotta take it when you get it. We're working with other counties to get this all training done at the same time online, so.
So is it, it's not business hours when the training's happening or?
No, it is.
Oh, okay.
You know, we got, we still have to get stuff done.
Well, no, yeah, I understand that.
And then we have to stay late to get everything else done. But we're trying now. I'm just giving you an update and letting you know that it's gonna happen.
But, I'm sorry John.
Yeah, we have the class in January, so we're forced to start training January first of January, which is a zoo for us. So if you know there's probably a good time.
Oh, your training doesn't start till January though, huh?
Right.
Okay.
Well, the tax lights have been turned on until July, they're going on in January first. Or rather, or, we're not supposed to lie until July, but our training starts on January first.
Okay, all right. Great, thanks for letting us know.
Well, I guess we can, well, all we have was that then?
Yep, that was it. She has no questions.
Okay, we will, uh, move over to Allison with HR.
Morning Allison.
Good morning.
Morning.
How's everybody today?
Good.
Okay, so first on the agenda, we have the Road Superintendent Assistant Road Superintendent wages. Since our last meeting, I did speak with Elroy. And he did state that if he was not given a dollar fifty raise like everybody in the budget, he would not accept the position.
And did he put that in writing? No?
You wanna do a motion for that or?
What do you guys want to do?
I just think if somebody is making or saying that or not accepting a position, that it should be in writing, that they aren't due to certain things. I just thought that was proper.
Well, that was... He offered it at the eighty-nine and then...
It was in the discussion.
It was in the discussion for the dollar fifty raise after the first of the year. So it's not that he's not accepting it, he's only accepting it if he gets a dollar fifty raise after the first of the year.
We need to make some type of, uh, move in one direction or another, I mean, we can't just let it hang.
Um, I'll move to approve the eighty-nine thousand dollar salary and that, um, his wages are increased with everybody else's based on the final budget.
Do we have a second? I'll second that motion and... Any other discussion? Seeing none, well Travis?
Aye.
What about I? Jamie?
Hi.
Liza?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, new state hotel rates October first.
Uh, yes, I received a email from Linda Sobic at NDACO. Effective October first, the GSA rate, um, for in-state is a hundred and ten dollars. So, so the state rate would be ninety-nine dollars a night, so we do need to, I'm asking if you would increase that for Mercer County as well, so we follow this rate.
I'll move to accept the state rate, uh, at ninety-nine dollars a night, um, effective October first.
I'll second.
Is that ninety, I thought you said it went to one-ten?
Well, it's one-ten, the GSA rate is one-ten, so that results in a state rate of ninety-nine dollars.
Okay, I didn't hear it correctly. Are there any other, uh, any other discussion?
What was the previous?
Ninety-six thirty, I believe.
I just have a quick question, do we need to do anything about the Assistant Road Superintendent wages or not?
We haven't offered that, but we'll probably have to step back to that, yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we don't forget that part because I think that was...
We didn't offer that to anyone, so.
Right, I didn't say, because I think that was not done at the last one. And I noticed that it's on here, so.
Um, you have a motion to accept the state rate and Liza's second, I believe? Okay, uh, any other discussion? Seeing none Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick, I also. Okay, HR budget.
Should we go back to the Assistant?
Yeah, let's go back to the Assistant, um, Road Superintendent.
I do feel like since we made a motion on the Road Superintendent, it should go, not that I want to delay this for Dennis or anything, but make sure that Elroy's still on board. Since it's not in writing either way, but... Anyway, you see? Guys, we gotta undo things.
The Assistant Road Superintendent, we did not, I mean, we have...
We didn't do anything because we were waiting on the Road Superintendent.
Well, also in what we had did over there was that, um, we were looking at, I believe Elroy said what, three bucks? To get his old wage for Dennis? And he would be mechanic and his slash help, assistant or whatever.
Correct.
Did he do interviews for that at all?
He did not. Uh, but in fact, when we talked, Rick and I talked to him, there was, he said there was no rush to hire Kermit Assistant Superintendent at the time. He wanted to evaluate the department before doing that and he would just like Dennis continue as the interim assistant and mechanic.
So this would be interim?
Right, and there would be no hiring yet until you decided to agree.
Because usually I think the superintendent would appoint or, I mean, it's kinda like some of the other departments, they choose their assistant, not so much us.
Right, no, I wasn't thinking that, I just didn't know if he did interviews already for it, that's what I was, I wasn't sure.
He wants to, uh, just study the department and see what the needs would be.
And did we, we bumped up Dennis's interim already, didn't we?
Yes.
It was three dollars, I believe.
Okay.
Didn't we, right, it was three?
Yeah.
We did three dollars when we, from, he was at thirty or thirty-one? And we did three dollars of... Elroy had asked if I correctly, he asked that he would go to Elroy's old wage?
Of thirty-six, eighty-two an hour.
In the interim?
Right.
Okay.
Do we have a motion or do we want to, what do we want to do?
I'm thinking.
Well, I feel like we already did the three dollars before, like I... I feel like if it become a permanent thing, I could consider going up to that, but interim, I don't think it needs to be that.
So if we want to wait with that, talk to Elroy and see what you, which way we're gonna go with that?
And, and please let him know we needed money, if you would accept that or not.
I couldn't hear you.
I asked that, you know, in writing if he's gonna accept the eighty-nine?
Sure.
With the increase on there.
Well, then we'll just, uh, we'll table the, we'll postpone the Assistant Road Superintendent wages today. Any objection to that? And then we'll go with HR budget.
Okay, I just wanted to bring this up to you because, um, first of all, I want to explain the importance of HR in Mercer County. Local government human resources provides recruitment, hiring and other human capital management support. HR duties include assisting department heads with hiring the county workforce, managing and improving benefit plans for employees and improve working conditions to retain employees. HR also ensures the county is compliant with laws and regulations, including labor laws and safety. By having an in-house HR, it creates rapport and improves employee engagement through face-to-face conversations. HR department knows the employee on a personal level and employees are likely to feel more comfortable bringing up any workplace issues they are experiencing. HR can address and resolve those issues on a personal level, boosting employee satisfaction and morale. Employees are your biggest assets. This means employees of the county are the most valuable resource the county has. As they directly contribute to success by providing services requested by the taxpayers. Without employees, Mercer County cannot function, making them more important than any other tangible asset like equipment or property. When a HR department was established in Mercer County, it was an investment in the employees. Today, I would like to review the current status of HR budget for Mercer County. Recently, it was publicly published that HR is the only department in the red. To clarify, if the HR budget was put into the twenty-twenty-three budget as approved, twenty-twenty-four budget, I'm sorry, by the Mercer County Commissioners on October fourth, twenty-twenty-three, with a line item total of ninety-six thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars, HR would not be in the red. The approved amount was not taken out of the budget at the October fifth, twenty-twenty-three special budget meeting, so question why the amount proved was not put into the twenty-twenty-four budget. In fact, the numbers will show HR is way below the amount approved by the commission on October twenty-twenty-three. After the hiring of HR, a new budget of seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars was presented and approved by the Mercer County Commissioners on March sixth, two thousand twenty-four. A decrease of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars from the approved amount in October twenty-twenty-three. As of September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, the HR budget is at fifty-four percent. But that does not, that does exclude two months of EM wages that should not be in with HR. That should be in a different line item, different department. You have the spreadsheet in front of you about the HR budget. I encourage you to look it over, if you have questions, let me know. Um, the consultant fee of two thousand dollars was not part of the approved budget and that item was put into my expenditures, but that was before, uh, the HR department was established. Mercer County HR is not over budget. I have also received support and thanks from many Mercer County employees since I have taken on this role. With many commenting, it's about time we have HR. Thank you for taking the time to review the HR budget. I look forward to working with all Mercer County employees and commissioners so we can be the best employer by investing in the biggest asset, the employees, who then can provide the best services to Mercer County taxpayers. And with that, do we have any questions?
No, I just wanna echo. No, I just want to echo, um, what Alice has stated, and some of this is that I think HR is extremely important, and that is why I brought it up way back in December of, um, this last year.
I'm sorry, that's twenty-two?
Of twenty-two even, and I even brought it to NDACO, and I went to the HR meeting there and discussed it with them, and they all completely agreed that we needed a full-time HR person. The person that we brought on to take, um, our cases just for a small, short amount of time, um, with the consultant company, she also echoed that, that she felt like we definitely needed full-time HR, and one of the reasons she took us on was because she knew that we were trying to acquire a full-time HR. So, I do think that this has been something that I, I feel like I've, I've worked on as well, and that I felt like it was very important for the employees here at Mercer County that they have a full-time HR.
And with past auditors, we had HR degrees and experience, so it's not that we were completely without, but they had the, the realm to handle some of this, so I don't... I do think we need to discuss the EM salary being taken out of appropriate budgets, because we do need that for the grant also, so we also need to work on that, because then the HR budget would not be over on salary, because it would be taken out appropriately.
So, can I clarify your stating the HR is now full-time? Because according to our books, it's part-time.
When we started it originally, it was full-time.
Okay. Because the first time I knew the hours was when she took on, well, the EM, and then we were talking about in the budget, how we budgeted, three-quarters HR, one-quarter EM.
But she didn't have EM right away.
No, she didn't.
Right, so when it was first hired, it was full-time.
Right, but you can't separate your twenty, eighty hours, either she's twenty, eighty hours, or, because she's talking about separating them. And that's where we had the issue with Cindy and with Jim Elbers, and remember, you guys said you never wanted to go there again? So, if she's bringing this up, all I'm saying is, you know, we gotta make this then one position. You gave me the hours at budget, so that's what I've been working with, with your wages.
The only thing that would need to change is, I'm salaried, so what my salary is for EM needs to come out of that line item.
Yes.
And my benefits will stay the same, and my perks will stay the same, but I have to show for the EMPG grant that I'm getting paid for my EM. So, that wage, that salary for EM needs to come out of the EM budget, not the HR budget.
And, and it... It's not, it's not, because... Okay, so that means, because I split them, when I did it with the two departments, then when you do your, when, see, that's the thing. When you put in your payroll, you need to split it, yes, you're right, Alice. And right now, it is coming out of HR, not EM, because we need to split it up, there's a different line item for EM.
I have to use your mantras, because I will have to report that.
Right, so that means you're gonna have to give us the payroll, and we'll get that together, right?
Right, but when we have it publicly published...
Yep, so that's what we'll do, we'll get a sheet like I did, and I had one line item for nine-one and one for EM.
It wouldn't be salary, then it would have to be an hourly.
I mean, it's salary.
Because...
You can't split a salary. And that's where that issue was with that, and we were just talking about it.
There may be, may just need two separate paychecks, two separate paid time sheets, two separate, it just may need to be separated.
Well, usually, we had one time sheet, but you had your one for HR, and then I had one for the EM.
But it can still be salary. But you can do salary separate, because I have twenty thousand dollars a year for EM, sixty-five thousand for HR.
You can just split it off.
Okay, but we will get that together for you, and then we'll talk about it, Alice, and then we'll get our right, as long as you're reporting correctly. Correct.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So, we got that figured out, then?
Yep. Yeah.
Before you leave, Alice, I want, I want to bring it up too, we have it on a additional. We had talked about, we had, in twenty-twenty-three, we budgeted for twenty-twenty-four, hundred and thirty thousand dollars for wage bump-ups, and, uh, we were looking at doing something on the lower end of the Sheriff's Department and the Road Department. And, uh, today, we haven't done anything, and I just wanted to, today, I'd just like to get some discussion, get this thing rolling in one direction or another. I'm not saying we're gonna make a decision today, but I just wanted to know where the commission's feelings, or where we're headed with this, or...
Did we set up that wage committee?
We set up the committee, we haven't...
But it's gone nowhere, it was kind of pointless committee, because it's gone nowhere.
No decisions have been made, be brought back to us, is what you're saying?
Well, we have that hiring point sheet that came up, but there was never a decision made on it, if we were gonna accept that or not.
It just hasn't gone anywhere. Which is why I didn't run up the committee in the first place, because now this is where we're at.
Right.
NSHR, I did identify there are certain positions in the Sheriff's Department that needs the bump-ups to get within the salary scale of, and also the Highway Department.
Sheriff's Department and Highway Department, like what Rick is saying?
Yes.
Yeah, they were the ones that, I talked to Jim about it, and he said his was all right, I, I, the only one, the two that I've heard were the Sheriff and the Road Departments. And there's a area that needed to be adjusted, yeah. I'm not saying that there's somebody else, but I'm just, that's...
That's what you know of anyway, for sure.
I know, we, we, it's been hanging out there for all, all year already, so...
It has, you're absolutely right, Rick, yeah.
So, I would like to, I don't know, I guess for today, it's like, I would like to at least, um, I don't know if we need to do anything today as far as, I would like to get everybody's opinion on, we can put this on the agenda in the future, and we want to deal with it, or what do we, what do we want to?
I would like a recommendation from HR and the portfolio holder, since it's Sheriff and Road, that's what you're looking at. Uh, I'd be willing to entertain anything that's presented.
Okay. I recommend, I would like to put it on the meeting next, uh, next meeting, that we can discuss it then.
So, do you want to just put it on the next meeting, or, Alice, you want to let me know when they're ready to meet?
No, I have, because we already have recommendations from our...
We've got most of everything together.
Yeah, so we do next meeting, okay.
We probably want to go over some of it a little bit, but what we have to do left is not, is minimal.
And that includes, so that's kind of addressing your other business you have here?
The discussion on wage increase, okay.
That concludes that, so now...
Alice, were you all done with all of your stuff? Okay, all right, sounds good, thank you.
So, I just work with one and get that.
All right, thank you.
All we have left is a portfolio updates and a budget.
Yep.
We gotta wait till eleven for that?
Uh, we probably should, because it's an advertised hearing.
Well, so, we can do a portfolio, please, go ahead, Jamie.
I really got much, Candy had a few different things at the landfill, but they were fixed and hopefully around them, and, um, Jim had a couple building things, but those are also fixed. Had a social services meeting here that went well, um, Sheriff Turner's came in and chatted with us, and the other counties were very interested in our youth bureau and how that worked, and really wanted to reach out, so he's been working with them. I think that's it, kind of in a mid-month or in-between meetings.
I don't have too much, except for very excited to see that we have some tar over there on the airport road, and I know that those at the airport are excited, I know the ambulance crew actually commented on it as well, how excited they are about it. So, that's really promising to see that coming through and getting put together there. For the airport, we did decide to, um, or we did hear that the feds will pay ninety-five percent depending on what we were able to get for grants, um, coming into the future. First, we're gonna use our monies that we have right now to do some improvements at the airport, as far as like our, our roadway and stuff like that. Then, we're gonna go to, hopefully, we think, the fuel system over there, depending on how much that's gonna cost, or where we're gonna be at, or if the feds will accept that as one of them too. And so, the, um, cross runway has been pushed back to the next one, so it'll be improvements with the roadway, um, the fuel system, and then the cross path for the airport, there is the last one that we're gonna be working on there. Um, unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it to the ambulance meeting, and so I have a bunch, I don't have any updates on that, other than I know that they're really trying to work at figuring out how to do, um, hiring, because they've been losing quite a few people, and they've been kind of down on staff. So, anybody interested in working for the ambulance, please apply, they definitely need you.
Can I back up, because jeans veterans, but back to buildings? Uh, Veteran Services wondering what we're supposed to do with the stuff in his office, so that's something we may have to work with Jessica on.
To see what she, when utilize or need and stuff.
On the ambulance EMT certified, or what the requirements for?
Uh, paramedic currently is what they're looking for, but I think they would take anybody and everybody's application right now, but they're down a paramedic right now.
Down a paramedic, but what are the minimum qualifications for ambulances?
Well, you can be a volunteer.
You can be a driver, just like a driver, CPR driver.
The last one also has something for the town, and they said like, their basic drivers and basic EMTs, they can provide the training necessary. If they really have any prior qualifications, because you can get the training through them.
Yep.
I, I mean, you wouldn't want me on there, but I'm just saying, you know, if there's any minimums on there, but...
Go ahead, Travis.
Um, we'll have P and, P and Z meeting in, in a few weeks, um, so we had our cases, um, earlier today. Um, as far as, uh, the library board, we had our, um, uh, periodic meeting on Monday. Um, kind of business as usual with there, with one exception, um, we're actually gonna send out, um, an RFP to all the cities in McLean and Mercer. The building that the regional library is in, um, is owned by the city of Riverdale, and they're not willing to make some of the required, um, upgrades to the building, and we're gonna look at, um, the options to possibly relocate that somewhere, um, outside of Riverdale. So, we're gonna get together, send it out to, um, all the cities in both counties, um, see if there's interest in having the regional library in a different city, so that's kind of the decision we came out with. We had somebody come and look at that building, um, the city was offering it to us to take over, but budgetary-wise, to do the necessary repairs on it was somewhere between, um, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars and nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we're gonna look at other options, um, so that's kind of the big thing coming from the library, and as we go through that process, I'll keep the commission updated, um. And then, as far as, um, we had, um, Lewis and Clark here at the last meeting, he gave a pretty good update on where we're at on that stuff, um. I don't try, I think, I don't think we've had really any other meetings, um, to report on, so that's my update.
Okay, uh, for, I have nothing to add, other than what we've talked about with P and Z. Uh, extension office, um, we have a little bit of work we gotta work on with some budgeting stuff, as far as how we're gonna handle it, with a couple of questions. Um, there's, uh, trap, I'm not sure it was travel or one of their budget line items anyways. But the Road Department, we, well, we hired, we have Elroy hired now. Moving forward with, we're still gravelling, putting in new pits, um, there's a lot going on there yet, but, uh, still contin- continually moving forward with this, with that project. Uh, Fair Board, uh, we haven't had a meeting now in September, being, other than the hairball concert, and, um, the annual meeting is scheduled for October twenty-ninth, I believe it is, on, in Hazen, at, um, City Hall, six-thirty, I believe. Sheriff's Department, uh, the one thing that, uh, I don't know, Terry, you can help me a little bit on, uh, we are gonna do a, uh, this bus driver training, Sheriff's Department sponsoring that?
Yes.
You want to tell us a little bit about it, or, or should you want me to just, uh, we're gonna do a sponsorship with, uh, um, Sheriff's Department, anybody who needs, uh, updating for their hours with their bus license, uh, Sheriff's Department's putting on the training and, and stuff on it, on October tomorrow night?
I'd have to check with, uh, if that's a week, just put that on, because...
I believe it's Thursday night.
Yes.
So, that's what I have for portfolio updates, so. Okay, we'll, we got fifteen minutes yet, we'll have, uh, Charlie come back, and we can finish our...
So, uh, went through, we went through and verified numbers, um, the parent low bidder, Northern Improvement, all their numbers checked out, to the amount of five-eighty-six-two-thirty-two-point-five-zero. And, um, you know, I guess I can recommend, uh, acceptance of that bid, uh, given the circumstances and the bids received, um, and moving forward with the project, I guess, in that manner. Should, I mean, county would be willing to accept, but yeah.
We have a motion to accept that?
Um, I have one question, Bayview Heights Association, let's get with it.
Yeah, we're, we're needing, over there, we approved it, so.
Okay. I would, uh, move to accept the bid from Northern Improvement for the five-eighty-six-two-thirty-two and fifty cents for the Bayview Heights, um, uh, road improvement project.
You're second?
I'll second.
Is there any more discussion?
Um, I did have conversation with, uh, Scott Wagner, um, yesterday, he's the, um, kind of the state bonding authority. Um, he didn't see any issues with us moving forward, um, he would like us to send, um, the information, um, basically, our procedure, um, the petitions, um, the outcome of, um, the hearing, that there was no opposition, basically, the list of things, and, um, he didn't see any reason that we couldn't have everything in place, um, before the end of the month. And then, we'd have to do the application to Bank of North Dakota as well, which I think I reported that last meeting with, um, them, so we'd have to, uh, fill out the application for that as well, so, um, accepting it, I don't see any, any issues, and then, as far as payments to contractors and stuff like that, even though, um, we're kind of worried about measure four, as long as we have everything in place, um, before the end of the month, we're essentially grandfathered in and can still assess it to the, to the tax statements, so.
So, in the execution of the contract itself, I presume would be held, uh, until funds are secured into place, or?
I think that would probably be the appropriate thing to make sure, you know, that we're not, have any hiccups, but...
Sure.
Um, essentially, we would be awarding it, but we'd have to make sure we've secured everything in place.
We're, you know, allowed legally to hold for sixty days, so as long as we, I guess, get our funds secured within that sixty-day timeframe, then we can execute the contract.
Okay, so, based on that statement, I would amend it that we, um, make it contingent on securing all the funding and all the, um, things are in place.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay, hold on, so you're gonna amend, say, say it, what, a contingent, contingent on...
Contingent on...
Securing funds.
Correct.
Right.
So, I think, uh, the vote on, uh, on the amendment then, Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Vote aye. Okay, any more discussion on the, the acceptance bid? Seeing none, Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick, aye.
Okay, thanks, and we'll keep working on it, so we'll keep you in.
We got about twelve minutes yet, so we'll have to take recess until eleven o'clock?
Recession? Recession.
I mean, we got all this final budget there.
Right, and a quick decision, so that it's up to you. And then Travis, you're gonna, you knee-dawn.
Yep.
Connected at the hip, right?
Yep.
So, these, these, we, we can hold. We can hold if you want, let's call it, we can stake it all up.
Oh.
We hold until.
It's up to you. You hold.
Um, numbers of workers issuing contracts.
Right.
Then they'll send, uh, watching the bill back.
There's stuff? Okay. Okay. You'll do that? Okay.
That's okay. Terry?
And then, yeah.
And then, uh, do you want to get, hang on, I don't need to understand, um, did we wanna have this sign? Copy the sign formula over here for the payment to the Apache?
At? Oh. Yeah, Rick's our vice chair.
This one here?
Did you, did you have to sign all day?
I don't think we did.
I signed this?
This is what you, what you need to sign, sure. I don't think, I think that was just our copy, so we're gonna have to sign this one, right?
Yeah, I, it's right here too.
Yeah, let's have him sign this.
Sure.
What date it you want?
You can, you can change the title, county chair, so.
Vice, just to say that, vice. They'll have to sign this one, and then that way you have a copy.
On your?
Yes.
Yes, it is. Two more seconds. And then I'm gonna have to sign here too, then you have.
Okay, okay.
Just sign here, this is our copy, that's for Charlie. Anything else you need? Oh, cool, thank you. And then we can pay it. We'll get it in, uh.
Budget.
Uh, okay, the thing is, I only, okay, see, we got about ten minutes, we got three minutes, 'cause I'm gonna give you what I gave the commission.
If you had found anything.
I'll go make copies of that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes.
Don't know what we were gonna do, a call this afternoon, we, uh, we're looking at seventy-five dollars with them. They need to pick out whatever, so. I need to have a conversation through that one, so.
Yeah, let's get together. I got information for you, let's get together, and, and, and mail on this week, if I have this.
Then we can get some form, plan form or whatever.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. Will you be?
I have what I have.
Yeah, and then one should, yeah.
Don't go out.
Oh, yes, absolutely. We're all here, answer questions. Um, and I think you have to do a motion.
Yeah, I did do it, said everyone, I should, but.
Well.
I have to, so, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of problems.
We just gotta wait a minute, just a little bit here, and then we'll close the regular meeting and open hearing, so. Okay, we'll call the, uh, Mercer County Commission meeting back to order, and, uh, we'll have a motion to close the meeting. I think I need a motion to that, right?
Yeah, I'll move to, uh, recess for a regular meeting and open up the public hearing for the, uh, final budget.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie? She's not here yet. Oh, I gotta wait a little bit now. I can vote aye. I have a motion to carry. We'll wait just a minute here, we'll wait for Jamie. It's eleven o'clock, we'll open the meeting then.
Here it is.
Will you, your vote to open the special mea- hearing? Jamie?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. It's eleven o'clock, we'll open hearing. Who wants to go first?
I'm Luana Fiskajon from Pick City. Um, I, what, I did public service, um, in another county during a really controversial time. Um, was on the park board, and so I wanna tell you that I come here without malice, but I have some real strong concerns. Public service is service to the county. And I sat here and I listened to the meeting, and I really took to heart what Human Resources said, what everybody said. Employees are massively important, I get that. But Mercer County is not just made up of the employees of Mercer County, it's made up of the, the community of Mercer County. And the way by which you're going to procure the money to fund this massive budget is unfair. I know widows, single people, that are going to be hugely impacted by this. It's unfair. It's not Mercer County, it's not rural, and to be honest with you, if you don't want measure four passed, this is the, this is the best way to get it passed, is by increasing people's taxes to this magnitude for things like, and I understand how hard you work. I, I did the same thing. And to be honest, I'm looking at three of you that I know for sure I voted for. You have to, to show true leadership, you've got to be courageous. And I can't believe, out of the five of you, and I wish Mr. Wolf was here, 'cause he, he should be here to hear this, that you, you have to stand up and think outside the box, and be courageous, and, and make some hard decisions. For example, the thing that jumped out at me was that last year, the crush gravel line item was a hundred thousand, and it was almost to the penny, how much the budget was for that. This year, it's a million bucks. Oh, we'll just throw a million bucks at crush gravel. It's ludicrous, you guys. You can't do it. You, you can't increase people's property taxes, thirty-seven percent? Can you imagine if MDU called you up tomorrow and said, "We're gonna increase your electrical," thirty-seven percent? You have no choice. You can sell your house. You can shut off your power. I know that out of the five of you, there had to have been two of you at least who said, "This isn't right, we've gotta do something else." And to do something else, you've gotta say no. You've gotta str- be strong, and you've gotta show that leadership. And I, I've heard rumors about salary increases for even, for, for you guys. And I want you to know, I appreciate everything you did, everything you continue to do, but it's community service. Other people ran for your jobs. Other people would have done it. I don't know if they would have done it as good as you are, I don't know. But we have become a society like this. I've seen it at the smallest levels of, of politics, in, in different places, I won't name, 'cause I don't wanna call anybody out, all the way up to our, our legislature, our senate. And we sit around coffee shops, and we talk about how everybody's got their handout, how everybody's doing everything to benefit, benefit themselves. Mercer County can't do that. You need to set the example. You need to set the example for your employees and for your constituents who voted you into this position. And so I'm asking you to take a really hard look at your budget, a really hard look at your tax proposals, and find the strength to make some hard choices and some hard changes. Because maybe we don't have enough population in Mercer County to pass measure four. But I guarantee you, what came out a few weeks ago is gonna have people voting yes. And I was against it, and, and I, I would vote yes, because I think that the counties are not being responsible with the funds.
Anyone else, as much as that, anything to say?
Good morning, my name is Carrie Cutting. I'm a Buella resident. Um, as you've already, you're aware, our tax increase was, was substantial. Um, hoping to add a little hope to this discussion, my understanding from conversations I've had, uh, with, uh, county employees, is that Carmen Reed has reworked these numbers, and that there is room for reductions in the overall budget, which would lead to, uh, these preliminary tax numbers being reworked. And I would certainly encourage you to, to look at that, and to take a hard look at what reductions can be made. Um, because certainly thirty-some present, uh, increase in taxes, it's just not something any one of us wants to face once, or even in the future, so, uh, please relook at, at the numbers, see if there can be reductions made, and we would appreciate your effort. Thank you.
If I can make a comment, Rick. Um, Carrie brings up a good point. Um, based on our preliminary budget, I think our general fund, uh, was around fifty-eight mils, correct?
It was, right at fifty.
Yeah, and right now, some of the changes that Carmen has, um, proposed to us, the, uh, general fund is at a forty-six point four.
Forty-two, yep.
Yeah, so, um, granted, it's preliminary to final, so those are some of the numbers we're looking at. It's a drop of twelve mils, which, uh, equates out to, uh, roughly a mil is a fifty-six thousand in our county. So, if you reduce twelve just on that, it's a six-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollar cut to the budget, just, just for people's knowledge, um, but.
Which is less than one percent?
Uh, well. Do you have the total budget number?
We, uh, also went through the road, the county road and the unorganized road, and we dropped it down. The amount was eight-hundred-ninety-four thousand four sixty-seven, so it came to about an eight percent drop overall.
Eight percent, okay. There, uh.
That, let Don explain that one. That was the.
Um, what happened is, um, our program recognizes park slash ambulance as the same line item. It did not show up on your estimated taxes as park slash ambulance. The line item you're looking at, you're from Pick City, right? So, you're in the Underwood School District, they ate you. Under, the Riverdale Ambulance District charged Pick City and the Underwood School District fourteen point six-three mils, I believe. That's, that's. That's, that's, the park line is the ambulance line for you guys, and that's where a lot of your jump came from, that fourteen-point-six-through-three, that the Riverdale Ambulance is now charging out for their services.
Well, the thing is, they just started this district, and I believe state put it in place last year, and so all the ambulances are going to these districts now, so they have, they can get approved up to fifteen mils, and that's what Riverdale did. And I know Mercer County will be doing it, but, you know...
They're still in the process of working for it.
They're still in the process, they're just using...
Right. And, and that, that brings up a good point. So, yes, the county sends out the tax statements. If you're a Mercer County resident, the Mercer County funds that we do, which are our general, our library, water resource board, there's, there's several of them, and then depending on where you live, so in instance, Pick City is part of the Underwood School District, and it's part of the Riverdale Fire District, so those show up on our statement but aren't set by us.
Okay, so you're saying the Mercer County ambulance, right?
Yes.
The one that, okay, before?
I don't believe they're the same thing. I believe that they're separate, the ambulance and the fire.
Yeah, and, and part of our southern county is actually Hebron Fire District, so there's, they don't follow county lines.
Mercer County, and not tell another county what to do.
It's their district board that does their approval of their budget.
Just like we can't tell the school districts and...
Yeah.
So the counties are the, the agency that collects them. We can control what is our portion of it, but these other districts, school districts, fire districts, they basically have control over theirs, but we take the brunt of it. Also, if the cities have their mill levies too, which, so if Pick City's doing a certain number of mils, it's the city that decides those, it's not the county. Yeah. And, and you're not the only Pick City resident that reached out, and one of them that came out, I was like, that doesn't even seem remotely possible based on our budget, and that's when we talked and found out that the fire district was a large portion of the Pick City resident area increases, area ambulance, yeah.
And that's the unfortunate thing with the preliminary tax statements, when we didn't have correct numbers in as far as road or anything else, that made stuff artificially incorrect.
Well, it wasn't incorrect, it was just our preliminary budget, put the numbers in, but now we got to rework them and, and there was...
Based on the information we have at the time.
Oh, agreed.
To everybody.
Sorry for jumping in, but yeah. Go ahead, Marv.
Hello, everybody. My name is Marvin Schwer for the record, so you guys know me. I've got a little handout that I want to give you, and, and some questions, which I apologize because they're gonna sound really pointed. In a perfect world, I would've got you a letter and had those, so you were notified in advance, but they were, just like your preliminary budgets, there were some corrections and some things I hadn't researched. I don't have enough copies for everybody. I thought I had printed enough, but I did not, so...
We'll, we'll share.
Can we share one? Thanks.
You guys can share?
We can share.
Jamie and I'll share. Thanks, Marv.
First thing I want to mention is that I have a term that I use, and I call it non-normal revenue. Basically, it's extra revenue that we typically don't get, and we never did get it before 2019, to my knowledge. That extra revenue that we've been receiving since then is seven-million-seven-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars, I'll call it eight million bucks. That's revenue this county has been receiving in the last four or five years. Here's my pointed question to you guys, to any one of your board members. Well, you got the table there. I want you guys to tell me how much of that money is left? Been doing a budget for four months, I just thought you might have a ballpark figure what that money has been used for.
The county infrastructure, also known as the Prairie Dog, was anticipated to pay for a lot of that gravel that's in the budget, that million dollars. On the federal ARPA, that was one point, almost one-point-six million dollars. That had certain criteria with it, a lot of that went into the building repairs that were desperately needed over the years.
And finance.
And finance.
We dedicated some of that when I was here towards that. So I guess my question is, it's still eight million dollars, I'd like to know how much, why my taxes are going up twenty percent? And we received eight million dollars non-normal revenue. If we never had this revenue, what would you guys be doing? This isn't expected budgetary numbers that are law that we're gonna receive every year that we can allocate taxes for. It's, it's extra income, and yet, my taxes are going up twenty percent this year. And you can say that, yeah, we got a few errors because there's a preliminary budget and now we got the final budget. It isn't gonna correct at all. Do you have, I guess what I'm looking for, and you guys can write these down if you want to, I want to know how much money, where this money went to? I want to know how much is left? And what it's dedicated to?
I'm glad I asked that last meeting.
We need, we need to know that. The very last question, oh, these are... I guess I'm kinda shocked. I don't know how else I can say it. We should have a four- or five-year plan, short-term, mid-term, long-term plan where we want to be. I'm not seeing that. It's all shooting from the hip. I guess the very last question I'm gonna ask you guys is, due to the information that we received that there, because of preliminary budget, that's where we received our tax statements, there are some changes. Are we going to go ahead, and you don't need to ask this now, answer it now, but consider this, are you guys gonna go ahead and approve this budget today? Are you guys gonna schedule another meeting to weigh in what's being talked about before you approve the budget and get the real numbers?
My, my recommendation would be that we would take everybody's input today and have a special meeting. I would like, personally, I'd like all five of us to approve a final budget. It is a very important aspect of what we're chartered to do, but definitely looking into comments is, is a huge priority for me, so I'll say that from my...
Thank you, Travis. Our conversations were to have a special meeting so we can work on this.
Back to your question about the four-to-five-year plan, because you, you did serve in this role for a long time. Did you have that plan? Did you have a four-to-five-year plan?
Yes, I proposed that several times. In fact, the road department, and I'll comment on that road department, we proposed a four- or five-year plan due to capital expenses. Road department has huge capital expenses, just for equipment, and plus the gravel and whatever, and we proposed a four- or five-year plan, knowing that it was tentative. Part of that four-year plan was to get the airport road paved. The plan's work is paved. And that was initiated by a gentleman on the ambulance board named Roger Bosch, came and talked to me. He says, "Marv, we got patients that are bouncing all over the ambulance, going out there, we need to get that fixed." I brought it to the board probably three times, "We gotta get that on the project list." And yes, we did get that done, and you guys followed through on that, and thank you. And part of what you had said too is that the road department, the plan is still in place, and we still have a five and a, and a ten-year plan. We're working on that every, we have our plans that we, we can, what we can fit in every year, and there is a plan out there for, that hasn't changed at all. It's an evolving plan, and it has to be live, it has to be able to move with. Okay, I appreciate your time and thank you for answering my questions.
Anyone else?
Commissioners, Darwin Knutson for the record. I'd just like to speak on a broader look at the budget, commissioners, and as I, I went through the study from the governor's housing committee, I went through the study of the Lewis and Clark Development and Real Estate Management Program, and I also looked at the Hazens Development Study they did here, I believe it was 2020. And one of the things that stuck out to me was the population of this county, and it's looking at it for the next twenty-five years, it is a decline, okay? And then we all know that's, that's a direct result on the monies coming into our community and so forth, so I just ask that you take that into perspective when you are looking at these budgets. The other one that just, just shocked me was I looked at an education study, and here we are in two, two schools in Mercer County, and we're barely reaching the fifty-percent threshold of academic achievement in our state, and North Dakota as a state is sitting on the bottom of the fifty states, right next to Oregon and Washington over there on the coast. It just shocked me. You folks really need to go talk to this superintendent's over there and see what can be done. They aren't doing their job, is the way I see it. We, they, this is a big responsibility, and, I mean, those numbers just, they're just unacceptable. I mean, they can do better than that. And that, and that all has a reflection on our budgeting too, and our education, and I mean, a business looks at moving into an area to set up their project, and you, you look at the study like that, where while population declining, education is at the bottom of the list, let's go somewhere else. You know, it's, it's, it's that simple. I've been in that industry for a long time, and those are parameters that you look at. The other, the other cloud here is this ICE, the federal ICE program. I just looked at their map. Did you all know that North Dakota is a sanctuary state? Yes, we are a sanctuary state, and I know through Wanda over there at the clerk's office, they're dealing with over twenty different languages out there in the oil field, and it's swampin', and it's really having a detrimental effect, and I'm sure you all heard the stories about, "Don't eat the dogs, don't eat the cats," so, and that is happening. Their dump is, these organizations will come in here and they will dump five-thousand people on the streets of Hazener, Buella, and they won't even turn around to look back. We will be stuck taking care of them. And why I bring that up is, you are our county government, you as a cohesive body can start writing letters, passing resolutions, and talking to these darn people up in our legislature, our senators, our representatives, and tell them to stop this from happening. It's not right for anybody, and I tell you, that would just, that would bankrupt all of us in this county if they did something like that, and it's a real possibility, they're doing it all over this country. It's sad, and we all have a heart for someone that is looking to lift themselves up and find a better way of life, but that better way of life is gonna drag all of us down where we don't want to be. We're seeing it over and over again. The other issue is, we are talking about expensive, expenses and raising the taxes and everything, and I would like to see you folks sit down with all these department heads and look to see where you can make some cuts. Tell them to go through their budgeting, and, and that's something that is just, it perturbs me because they don't give you enough feedback. I, I'm from the management area, project management, and you got job costing for every little detail of a project, and, you know, when I can't sit and look at the numbers and saying, "Well, why is it costing so much to mow the shoulders this year compared to last year?" Or, you know, moving the snow, that, "How come it's costing so much this year over last year?" We got a set number of miles, that cost should be established and definite except for the inflationary costs, you know? It, it's a baseline. It's a baseline, and it goes right back to what Marvin was saying about a four- or five-year program. It, this is, this is an exercise every one of the department heads up here should be doing, because it's, it's not just handing in numbers, but it's an educational process, so they really rationalize what they're doing when they come in here. And there's little changes that can be made, and I'll pick on the sheriff just for a minute on that, you know? And that's with needing to replace this vehicle with hail damage and a broken windshield. We're all struggling. There isn't a person in this county, I don't think, that doesn't have hail damage on one of their vehicles. Fix the windshield, go another year or two with that, that vehicle. You know, it's those little things that add up and help us in the end run in the budget, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm gonna interject here, when I was telling you guys, the Riverdale ambulance mil is fourteen-point-six-eight, not six-three, just on the record.
I'm from Pick City, so I just learned where some of my increases went, but you know, you guys thought the budgets. I'm retired, fixed incomes, did okay. Bought my property in ninety-seven. The blocks still built up, and I don't know if I can top number, but every ten years, I'll be giving people a hundred thousand dollars. How long's it take you guys to save a hundred grand? I got a budget. We all feel that, I don't know how that Skokwea little area got built for taxation, but it's a target, an unfair target. So, before I go, I can't talk very long because I'll lose it, so that's what I have to say.
Thanks, Cory.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Alan Anderson. First off, thanks for what you do. I know it's a lousy job sometimes, the pay's not that good, and I appreciate what you do. The other part though is, that you should know, I've never come in, and I, and I'm not the youngest one in here, I've never had to come into a property tax discussion before, so I'm pretty ignorant as far as what all you go through, I know you don't get a lot of help and things like that, but I just want you to have a perspective on how this kind of, the preliminary tax budget kinda surprised a lot of people, and hopefully you can do, you know, have another relook at it a little bit, because it's, it's easier to understand when about, you know, valuations go up and the taxes go up and things like that, it's kinda an indication that inflation's going, jumping up and things like that. It's a lot harder when you have, you know, a three-percent increase in the valuation that you have a thirty-one-percent increase on your taxes. And then it's like, wow, what in the world happened? So, so I started to look back a few years, and, you know, it came into three, three areas for, for our taxes, my taxes, and one of my, one of the answers occurred a little earlier in some of the other discussions, but to just give you a little, little, that, that thirty-one percent came in three areas on my tax side. One was the county, and that was, you know, you guys held it relatively flat as far as just expenses over the last four years, but then when you have a twenty-percent increase, that makes a huge difference to us, and so that's why, you know, looking at that, trying to reduce that a little bit or spread it out is a lot easier for people, and, and you can educate people a little easier. The second part was the park side and the ambulance, but my, my question is, if that's always been in there, why have I never been charged that in the past? But my, my question is, if that's always been in there, why have I never been charged that in the past?
Because they just got it in place. This is the first year you have this ambulance.
So where did their money come from before in my taxes?
What, what, what happened was we did it in our county general fund or, no, yeah, that's what we did. We used a valuation from the county and then what we did is we taxed it all for Mercer County ambulance. And then we took that section out and they paid the Riverdale ambulance.
So, so what you're telling me is in the county budget, it'd be a forty percent increase for me normally.
Actually, no.
Because you just broke it out.
Because we didn't ever do that many mills.
Well, all I'm, all I'm saying is that, that the county charges before, they all came in the county line. That's been relatively flat.
But they charged at, at four mills. We could only mill four mills for the ambulance. Once they got their own district, they had up to fifteen mills. So it's the difference between fourteen point six eight to four mills. So right now Mercer County ambulance, we had to cut out Riverdale. So they are only getting four mills of the county. And that's specific to the ambulance.
Yeah, and, and the ambulance is, is, it's a very important service. I get it. And, and understanding why they need such an increase is, is I'm sure a concern to a lot of us. But it's just, it's unreasonable to do it in, in one shot.
And that's where you need to talk to the Riverdale ambulance board because they're the ones, now they're their own district, just like your fire boards and things like that.
Can you post their phone numbers or are they someplace else?
Okay. You're not talking our ambulance board.
No, no.
I'm talking, make sure they understand.
Exactly. We want to get to the right people as far as what in the world are you doing?
Okay, yes, I will, I will get that information.
Thank you. Cause, cause that, that's, that's kind of crazy. And that, and then the only other part is that, and this is probably my ignorance, is the unorganized roads? Is that the gravel discussions that you guys had or what, what, because that goes up and down a lot?
And that's county road fund. So like I said, we did take it down, but that's because we met with, we have to meet with the county road, the county engineer and then the auditor and treasurer. So we can look at these state funds coming in and use them appropriately. Because you can only use them for certain things. So that's why it was so high because we weren't putting that.
Eliminary tax rates went out. So.
And, and so it's, you know, that, that is especially troublesome for some of us who are, are paying a lot more on a, on a special for some paving and things like that. And, and then this went up significantly, significantly and on, on some of them. Some of us don't use even roads that, that we aren't paying a portion for right now. And that was just your earlier discussion in your previous meeting.
On the unorganized, so is your property in city limits or is it in the county? Okay, so the thing, the important thing to think about on the unorganized roads is that does not include city residents. The county road goes to everybody. Unorganized is not included in city incorporated property.
We're not in city. We're Kevin's side once, we're paying for our own.
Yeah.
So what services can we get out of this? I mean, I, I know that it's private, it's a big place and all of a sudden it showed up. I think it's okay to walk.
Yeah, and.
And it's like all of a sudden I get nailed for three hundred dollars and I was like, whoa, what for? You guys don't, I forgot, but actually my neighbor did that. So three persons did that. And stuff, so what services can I get out of? I thought about a state could get out of it.
You know, just in the conversations that we had, it's like, what are we using the gravel for? And what are we? We had a hundred and thirty thousand dollar budget for gravel and like you said earlier, it's miniscule. It doesn't go anywhere. Even a five hundred thousand dollars does seventeen miles in the county. That's three inches thick.
But you don't have to do it every year. That's where that plan is.
We are so far behind that it's unbelievable. Go out and, go out and drive those gravel roads.
I, I, we just can't fix it all of the time.
We're not. We're doing less than ten percent.
So are our taxes going to go up the same amount next year? I mean, I, you know, I mean, you're going to decide they don't need to really judge it all next year, so.
I don't want our tax, I don't want to pay any more taxes than anybody else. I, I don't want it to go up anymore. We're trying to do what we can for everybody in this county.
And we're, if you're not angry yet or not screaming because we, we hope that that's true.
Well, that's my goal anyways. And I think everyone in here is, is in that, in that, in that goal also.
So, and just thank you. I mean, part of it is willingness to serve. The other part is do what you can to kind of reduce the impact all, all especially in a single year. So, thank you.
I do feel for you Pick City residents because this ambulance levy alone has hit you guys and it's out of our hands, which is the worst thing to have to say, but unfortunately that's where it's at.
And you, you're talking about the unorganized roads, right Rory?
About the unorganized, those mills that we changed, we have those ten mills that we go against.
And you're talking about the unorganized, right Rory? Because you live out in the country. You're not in city limits for Pick City, right? Or does Pick City have city limits?
So. Last year we had a zero on unorganized roads because we didn't have, because we had.
That's, I would say that's the other thing is we used to have three different funds and now we're down to two different funds. Cause.
Unorganized went away.
But it also doesn't seem like.
Farm, the farm to market went away.
Our percentages aren't even, like, if somebody else's percentage is at twenty-two percent, when we take off our, that eight percent that can increase the value of the house, which I'm having a problem with that, I understand, building supplies, everything's going up. But when somebody says to me that maybe if we take off our house, we still had a twenty-seven percent tax increase. And somebody else has a twenty-two percent tax increase. Well, now this map, you can't really screw it up. It, it, is it, is it, if a mill is a mill, it's a percentage is a percentage. Why are we paying more where we are than other people are paying? Why is the percentage so much greater for us than for someone else? Because I understand that the value of my house might be higher, but then the percentage should be the same and it's not.
So I think we're talking about the, the roads then, probably?
You can talk about, you can talk about the county, the road, the, I, I mean, I don't know for sure which, they didn't list the percentage increases for each one. And honestly, I didn't, I didn't figure it out. But I do know that my true value value went up eight percent.
Correct, yep.
My total was thirty-six point seven four. So that leaves twenty-eight point six three to be accurate. And other people will say, I mean, you can all know what we're paying for taxes. And other people will say, well, I got a twenty-two percent increase. Well, how could they get a twenty-two percent increase? And we're paying a twenty-eight percent increase overall. If you add up all those overall. Who is digging in the hardest funds and, and why is that happening? And, you know, and where we are, we're paying for all our own pavement and we're, we're doing everything. I did, I did the Candace lunch for the ambulance service this year. Dave and I bought stuff for Pick City Park. We donated to the fire. We donated to hospice. We donate, donate, donate to things that happen in Mercer County. When a house was built, a lot of those materials came from Hazen. I mean, we paid taxes already on that stuff. And so you can see where at some point, there's a, there's a pretty large group of us who are like, you know, what's going on here? I mean, why are we, why are we paying more? I pay more based on the value of my house. I don't, I've never complained to you guys about that, never. I, I'll, I'll do that. I understand the value of it. But the percentage is not equitable. There's something going on where the percentage is not equitable. And that should be a problem for a single person in this room. Even if you're getting a lower percentage, good for you. I guess I wouldn't say anything either. But it's not equitable to what we're paying.
So I, I think part of this is the, do you live actually in the city of Pick City or do you live outside too? So you've got the unorganized road one too? So I think that might be part of it, is the difference between if you get unorganized roads or if you don't? Because like Travis was saying, unorganized roads actually does not go to anybody within those city limits. It only goes to the people outlying those areas. So I think that might be a portion of that. You know, I don't have your statement right in front of me, so I couldn't tell you a hundred percent. But I don't, and then was that including the Riverdale ambulance into that or not? It wasn't, right?
That's all the increases. And the increases were, so my county increase was almost a thousand bucks, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Park board, six hundred and twenty-six dollars. School, four hundred and seventeen dollars. Unorganized road, six hundred and forty-nine dollars. Those were all increases.
Yep.
The fire district actually went out, went down sixty-two point nine seven.
Yeah, so the park board is the ambulance actually, right?
Right, yes, yes.
So that's the ambulance.
And when you get your statement, it will say park slash ambulance. We need to fix that.
And I, I understand that now. I understand that we now have no control over the school. But the county increased a thousand bucks and the unorganized roads increased six hundred and fifty bucks.
Yep, and that unorganized roads now is down, right? You took that one down?
Yes, that one went down. Thirteen point six four.
Thirteen.
And, and it was a zero last year.
Yeah. And, and part of that is, yeah, because the farm to market is no longer as existent. So it used to be under farm to market perhaps before. And we no longer have that anymore. We're not. It would have been on your, last year's one would have had the farm to market or should have. Right, and it's definitely something, like even when we first put it out, I said, we really need to work on this. We really need to hone this in. And we really need to find out what we can do to adjust this, to make it realistic the best we can and still get some of the services provided to our community. It was one of those things I definitely said for everybody up here, and I think we all agreed, that it's definitely something that we need to work on before we actually do the final budget.
Unorganized roads went down from fifteen point two one to thirteen point six four. So only dropped one point five seven.
Yeah.
It is.
Correct.
What was the county road before it dropped that? County road was fourteen point eight. Yeah. That was two point eight one, six, seven.
It goes there with kids.
Right, because it was county and all we could use is four mills.
And then with those mills leave us city people?
You are not getting charged those four mills.
Because you are now Riverdale ambulance district.
Where did those four mills go then?
Oh, yeah, you would have been charged those four mills.
Where did those four mills go then? Where were they diverted to then? I mean, who got?
Okay, the thing is Mercer County ambulance got less. They got less because we cut, cut out that bounty. So they got their four mills, but not like, they didn't get the funds like they used to. Those funds, around seventeen thousand, now go to Riverdale. But at four mills, see, that's the thing. The difference is that they got the fifteen mills. Riverdale is, you know, got fifteen to you as well.
Somebody's tax increase should be a different percent outside Riverdale or Pick City area?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
So what did that four mills equate to?
It was, um, okay, hold on, down here. He's actually. Here it is. Okay, the four mills. Ambulance, okay. Their four mill, four mills was two hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty five. That's what it equated. And they always request, you know, three hundred, they've always requested three hundred, but that one portion would always go to Riverdale, about seventeen, eighteen thousand. But this year it'll be lower than that. But yeah, that was two hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty five. And Riverdale's, I don't have, ooh, I don't have that.
I'm not asking the Riverdale side. I guess what I'm trying to say is, is the four mills that I used to pay Mercer County, you know?
Yeah, he wants to make sure that he's not paying for Mercer County since now he wants to pay for Riverdale.
Not because that's why we had to cut it out.
Where would I, where would I see those four disappeared in my county tax?
It would be in your county.
Yes.
So then the county charges went up more than twenty-four percent. And, and if it was, if it was equal and I know it's not, it would actually be a forty percent increase from my particular bill. And when you're switching like that. Because if, if, if you look at the thirty, thirty percent increase overall, zeroing out any increase in valuation, it's the third, third, the third, if the county going up, the park, which is the ambulance going up and unorganized road going up. Those three things are essentially equal in my tax base. If, if, do you, do you understand? So it just says that the county is.
Oh, we know. We are not arguing. This was thirty-three. What they could do is, well, right now, the final budgets have been set, but it's up to them and their district to lower their expenses is what they could do.
After the tenth, can they come back and submit a new budget? I don't think so.
But actually up until the tenth, they have.
Yeah, up until the tenth, they could reevaluate, but I don't know what their meetings are. You know, I mean, I don't know when their meetings are, so I don't know if you managed to get one any before then.
I think if taxpayers around Pick City understood that it was the Riverdale Fire Department that was.
Ambulance.
Was doing this, the Riverdale ambulance that was doing this, that there would be some hell reason.
At least you could talk to them.
And maybe you could get them to schedule a special board meeting. I mean, it's, it's worth a try, I guess, but.
I mean, the school has to give us, I mean, I missed that date. The school is supposed to give us a chance.
Yeah, and Riverdale had their public meeting, but I don't know if that made it on your tax statements. That was a new, it was a new thing this year and our programmer, I don't know if that managed to get on your tax.
Because it was July.
And for that reason, maybe they would hold a special meeting for you just because you guys didn't get a chance to protest because the meeting wasn't publicized.
I under, I understand what they're thinking. They're thinking that they didn't get their fair share all these years. They need more money and they're trying to make that four dollar money too. But they're, I mean, I can't imagine how much money they're getting. I mean, what is, what is their budget going to be based on those fourteen point?
I don't know. Well, I don't have it right in front of me, but.
It's got to be millions of dollars.
Well, millions.
We don't have McLean, because that would be out of McLean counties or.
Well, McLean is half of it and we're half of it. Not for Riverdale.
No.
For Riverdale ambulance. Oh, yes, okay. Because we mill half on our side and they mill half on their side. Then they have the total budget. I don't have it right in front of me, but I do know those numbers. So if you could even give me your email and then I can make sure you get that information.
And how, how could you change that district?
Yeah, and say I don't know.
Yeah, the state established these ammas because they're all struggling. I think that was behind it. And they're basically, they're basically being forced into getting into districts now instead of the way we've been doing it by doing the county mill and four mills and doing that. So, but I think even if you just went and talked to the board and just talked to them and then see, because it's new for them too.
Sam, just a question on revenue. And Travis, I believe you went to a late night council meeting, didn't you? Mentioned that. Are they going to give us any more money?
The, the coal severance?
Don't we get, don't we get a coal severance payment?
Yep, yes.
We, we get it every month and it's based on, so coal severance is the base of, it's thirty-seven and a half cents per ton that's removed from the ground. And eighty-five percent of that comes local, fifteen percent goes to the state. And then on, so coal conversion, which is when it's burned in the power plants. It's the thirty-seven and a half cents per ton, but the ratio is flipped. So then it's fifteen percent local, eighty-five percent goes to the state. The state, at the last legislation for, went, I think eighty percent of that going to the state. So they reduced it, which then helped the power plants.
Right.
But we don't set that number and it's based on production. So that number varies. And I believe in our budget, it's roughly two million. So that number varies, and I believe in our budget, it's roughly two million dollars of our revenue.
That's what I understood too. I went through that program, and I figured out for the tonnage, it was mined here in, in Mercer County, and it amounts about a, a point five percent of the value of that coal, okay? That coal is like around thirty-four, thirty-five dollars a ton. And like you said, it goes to the power plants, it goes to these big corporations. These are two of the largest corporations in the country, and I don't think they're giving us our fair share. And that's something that should be addressed, and you, you folks could set up with a meeting with the, the city mayors and go out and maybe s- talk to these people, these legislators in our area involved. Because we're looking, I, I hear talks about childcare and the school and all the issues that we're talking here, and these are all these big corporations' employees. And they've been cutting back, cutting back, cutting back, but over my lifetime, I've seen these corporations be handed twenty million dollar paychecks over, over my lifetime, at least three times. They don't hand Mercer, uh, uh, Mercer County twenty million dollar paychecks. And I really think that we should be pushing for at least five dollars per ton of that coal. We're getting left out. I read through that program, and all the maneuverings that are done there according to their production and their expansions and all that stuff is allocated. It's all tailored for the coal industry and the powerhouse industry, but not the communities that they're, they're, they're serving. And over my lifetime, they have cut back their, their workforce, they have cut back their participation in, in the counties, and, and they should, they need to step up. Everybody's hurting hard, and they need to step up because when you look at their profit margins, they aren't hurting one bit. They aren't hurting one bit. And they're, they're going on this CO2 crap and this green crap, and, you know, they're, they're taking all that tax money from the federal government and putting it into their little games they play with that kind of stuff, having to have so, certain percentage of green energy, you know? Well, they need some, they need to be looking at their community a little closer, and, uh, you folks, I'm just putting this in your mind, to think about how to do that, and one is getting all these legislators. And just making a vocal, being here today, getting it in the newspaper, and, and speaking to our legislators, and getting some publicity on this, and, and that's the only way they, they would even listen, is if you put some pressure on them. So, and I'll tell you what, I'd be happy to volunteer to go kick their doors down any time of the day. I have no problem with going to speak to any of these people, because, uh, they need to step up. They need to step up. So if we can get some, uh, money there and, uh, get them to help, help out with the county, it's all the better for everybody, including their employees, you know? The wages they have to kick out in the future for their employees to stay above water. So it's a win-win situation, and, uh, yeah, they just gotta fire lobbyists. It's okay.
And on Darwin's comment there, the, I, I can't tell you the year when the severance and coal conversion was put in place, but to my knowledge, that, um, uh, cent per ton has not changed since it was originally started.
It's way outdated.
So I, yeah, from a, let's say twenty years, you know, if it was ten percent of the price of coal twenty years ago, it might be a third of that, or, I mean, I don't know the numbers offhand, but, um,
No inflationary.
No inflationary adjustment to it. Yeah, you're right, Darwin, so. Um, that's set by the state legislation, and it's definitely something we can talk to our district representatives. Um, i- if the county, um, did a home rule charter, that could be something in it, that it would be an additional part, um, issued by the county. Um, since so many people work at those things, I don't know where that would go, but.
How about permitting? Uh, they do a lot of permitting for operations and so forth. Uh, can we, you know, jump up those permit fees? And, uh, look at maybe increasing our revenue there to something like that?
Mm-hmm.
I'm Casey Boyd. Um, I did not plan on talking about this till Darwin brought it up, but, uh, speaking to Travis's point, um, Art Link was governor when the coal severance and the coal conversion taxes were put in place. At that time, coal severance was seventy-five cents a ton, and coal conversion was four point one percent. So they've had drastic reductions in taxes. What I really came to talk about was our Vanguard assessment. I hear a lot of friends and neighbors and even family that continually are getting reassessed and raising their property values, which increases their taxes. Um, we've been told in the past that that's required by the state. I think we need to push back on that because we have a candidate running for president that wants to tax us on unrealized capital gains, and that's just playing right into their hands. So we need to get that assessment value in check. When I got friends and neighbors that lived in the same house, and it's worth ten times what it was, houses haven't gone up that much in Mercer County. Um, I have some friends that have actually built new houses, and they're being assessed higher than what the cost of building the house was. Well, that's not reasonable. Um, as far as the budgeting process, I think the timeline needs to be fixed a little bit. I brought this up before in the past. We need to get this budget hearing earlier in the process so that we're not eight days from our deadline and up against the timeline. Um, I think we can have this earlier. Uh, my interpretation is that you are required to have a budget hearing so you can take input from the public and adjust your budgets according to input from the public. Um, you had it on the agenda today to approve the final budget, and that's not taking any input from the public. Um, once again, I've brought up issues in the past about the transparency. I know we can't put all hundred and fifty pages of the budget up on the screen so that the public can participate in line by line. Um, I think that happens more in the preliminary budgeting, but it would be nice to at least have a summary of where our taxes are going up and why, and then something that the public could follow along with. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Thank you, guys and ladies, for letting us speak and listen. Um, I stand before your humble, I should really educate myself more. Um, like what's all, where our money's going, and like everybody else, my taxes, so. And, and I'm under different circumstances, you know, mine went up three hundred and fifty, fifty percent. Um, my, one thing that I came here mainly is what scares, what scares me is, I'm like, oh, gentlemen, I am on a fixed income, maybe I shouldn't have retired, because this, this really scares me. Uh, maybe I should get another job just to pay my taxes, because, but, but I remember I paid them all my life, and here we are. Um, my first question is, okay, you hear all this about recreational property. Um, I live up next to the lake. Um, um, my address is Hazen, it's not Pink City, but I live, you know, as crow flies, five miles from Pink City. Um, I do not have water access. Uh, I, of course, I tried to fight for it, and the court tells me that, you know, it's a sanctuary where our property starts and where it ends. Um, so I'm just wondering, okay, who do I talk to about, um, recreational property? I, I just don't get it, and I, I don't have a bunch of property, but, um, is that going to go up considerably even more? Um, my other question is, is, um, what, what are we going to do if this report passes? That's really scary, you know, our budget, we, you know, I, I feel for you guys. I, I really need to educate myself more and, and just read on where the money's going, and, um, what else? I guess that's kind of everything in a nutshell. I feel for you guys. But I really, can anybody tell me what recreational property is?
I was gonna ask you what you were referring to.
Well, are you seeing it on your tax statement?
I did get a little footnote in there, a little piece of paper that says that, uh, my taxes may reflect if this is my, um, let me, how does that say it? My resident, permanent residence or main residence? If you qualify for primary resident credit, that amount is not reflected on the estimated tax statements. It will be reflected on the actual statements we sent in December.
Yeah, that's if you put in for primary residence, um, rebate, I think, or something. It was five dollars.
Well, I, I want to put in for that, and as, I'm still in the works of buying some of the property for my family. The family land was put into an LLC, so I didn't qualify for that, but this is my permanent residence.
Okay, I would try again in January. Um, they, they will open that back up again in January, January first. I would try again if you've got that switched around and you've got all that worked out with the recorder's office. I would try again for that residence credit.
So do I talk to the clerk of court then?
Uh, recorder, right outside the door here.
Okay, alright. Thank you very much, Ms. Paul.
But, uh, that brings up a good point. I think if, regardless of this meeting or any other time, if you have questions, I mean, our staff is here to answer. They might not always have the answer right away, but I know we've had numerous discussions outside of meetings on, you know, how do we explain this? How do we explain that? Um, so it's, um, we don't have all the answers. We try to find them though, if we don't have them, so.
Can I ask a quick question in regards to what I did this year? I had heard that everything north of ET-06 is considered lake property. Is that not so, Jen?
I believe we have something. I don't know. That's probably a Jen question, is.
Yeah, I have to pull Jen in here.
Can you bring her in?
Can you color?
Yeah.
I don't want to misspeak to that.
We just want to make sure we get those seven correct.
I think Gwen went over to get her.
Did she have Gwen want to go?
Oh, yeah, Gwen went to go see.
She's coming.
Yep, there she is.
Hi, Jen.
So the question is, um, property within a certain distance of the lake, is that a certain district, or how do we look at that, distinguish that, or is there?
Uh, yeah, north of ET-06.
Just period if it's north of ET-06?
Yeah, it's considered lake property. Yeah, okay.
Because it turns, so when you get close to Pink City, it ties into two hundred, and then it becomes two hundred going through Pink City?
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, lake property, I mean, lake property, yeah.
Okay, so anything north of ET-06 or two hundred after it ties in there?
Back there, yeah.
Okay.
You want us to formulate on that?
What was that?
What does it mean toward taxes?
Um.
We are paying for it, which is really hard because the government almost like runs over that, and it was, or just.
Yeah, well, I mean, the land is just a little bit higher, of course, but it goes off the sales of the lake. I mean, we have to stay between ninety and a hundred percent of the market. So when your neighbors are selling your house for way above what we have it valued at, if when I send in the sale reports to the state and we're coming in at eighty-five percent, and I have to be at, at least at ninety, I have to raise the values five percent to get to that ninety percent. They have a certain section just where lake shore, so. Actually, it's the sales that drive the market.
In one year, I got a question for you. How is it in one year, the assessed value of our home that we built three years ago, three years ago, is one of sixty-six thousand dollars, and nobody's even set foot on the porch? And we're competing with people who have Taj Mahals next door to us? I mean, how many? Four kitchens in one house?
Well, I know like this year, all detached properties went up, and that was all countywide.
It seems so certain.
You have a detached garage, that was probably part of it.
Yeah, well.
But.
Who's doing the assessment?
I think his point is that when they are came out, they, they've never been in a house, so they haven't compared amenities, right?
Yeah.
They haven't compared, you know, what the inside of the home looks like.
It's like everybody's rubber scuffed out there. This is a million dollar home, this is a million dollar home, and they're not.
So our taxes just county line with a twenty-five percent. That does not include the, um, what is it, the underground?
Unorganized.
Since our house was purchased, since we built that house, evaluation has gone up. A little over ten hundred thousand dollars.
I mean, I'd have to look up that.
Eric, personal plan.
I called yesterday and asked for any assessment, um, compared to the, the brand acres. It's maybe a hard option out there.
This one farmland, this sound for five, six thousand, is that, changing farmland right next to it?
What, agland? Agland's different. Yeah, agland obviously doesn't have that value that sounds for. Yeah, but it's all based on soil.
Couple questions on that, what you said. For one, um, you got that big bullseye, everything north of ET-06. Well, not all agland is created equal. I mean, you have a beautiful, view of the water, but I, I can't step foot on the.
And there is different evaluations based on that too. I mean, some people is our lower, and you're right on the lakefront there. Your value is higher.
But I've jacked up so much, and then I have, I don't have the most property that most people are helping, but since I know we're down to more than fifty percent of the acres are coming up the property, and that was becoming recreational property, it, it's agland right up to my house. It gets planted. How, how does that line come out? You know, I, I'm on a fixed income like this gentleman here, and it went up so beyond policy, I, I think I should get, I wish I would have quit my job, because I'm gonna have to get another job just so I can pay the taxes.
People get forced to sell their, their homes, and that happened, and that's what happens. It's not fair, and it's not right, but you watched it happen in Whitefish, Montana, where not local families for hundreds of years had owned that one piece of property, and all of a sudden, I'm being stereotyped by people from Canada, California, moved in, and the value shot up, and people had to sell their homes. People who lived there for a hundred years had to sell their homes because they couldn't afford their taxes. And unfortunately, that's what's gonna happen in Mercer County. I think it's already started to happen in some of the lake properties. We have people who built houses on that lake, and their parents did when there wasn't a tree on that property, and paid, you know, put up houses on, with a ninety-nine million ways, and then paid eighteen thousand dollars. I mean, when, when eighteen thousand dollars was a decent amount of money, whatever that was.
Well, I have people who buy little cabins for six hundred thousand dollars and tear it down and build one point two million dollar houses. That's what drives the market and your value is up, so.
They are, but I, Jen, I can finish. But the people who sold that house to those person, that person, their family lived in that little house from the time they were there, and their taxes and expenses got high enough that they couldn't afford to keep getting more. And so when you're sitting here and your, your, your taxes are, you know, twenty-five, I heard somebody say that, twenty-five percent of what they bring in a year, and you've got somebody standing here offering you six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, at some point you have no choice. If you want to eat, or you want to afford nursing care, or healthcare, as expensive as that is, even at when you turn sixty-five sometimes, you've got to sell your property. It happens all over, and it's happening in Mercer County. And I, I, I'm assuming that you care, but there's probably not, not a lot of anybody's gonna do it, probably based on.
It's based off the sale, and people sell their homes as her.
Oh, yes.
What they sell it for, and then, yeah, I gotta say, we put the market going, I mean, it's just.
I know, it's no market.
Yeah.
I'm almost being forced into it because of how the neighbors, because of what, we're seeing it at cabin sites, like, yeah, white cabin, little tiny cabins, and those people, those are gonna be wanting to expand theirs for a natural, they're gonna have to, because they can't afford to pay the taxes.
There's, um.
My question, so going to that budget, if the county did not have the link properties to tax. If the county did not have the lake properties to tax, the county still has all the roads to take through, has all the amenities that need to be taken, taken up to buy the money. But if the, if the lake properties were not there, where would you give them?
There was a.
The amenities and all those taxes that are coming into all that. We didn't have the, the properties. Oh, yes, the measure four. This state has so much oil money that they are wasting. They will add up in no time. They will have to.
You know, last week we were on major number four.
Oh, no.
Oh, no. But yes, I understand, but we don't want the state to dictate to the counties. And this is where local boards.
The only thing they'll dictate is how much money to pay.
You know, and once the state takes over and starts allocating, who's gonna benefit from that? Your, your bigger cities, your part of a grand force, midland, might not.
And so forth. Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, but it's gonna happen.
Yeah, because it's a fight, it'll be a fight, but it's worth it.
So how are rural counties like persons gonna, um, survive?
Well, they'll have to work on that.
If our counties and our school boards and our local, uh, municipalities, those start stepping in and working on this, it's gonna happen. Mayor Paul will have us.
Yeah, and it's, uh, no, no persons will lose their property because of a tax, nobody. That's just unamenable.
I do have a question though for, for the board, because you mentioned where does that, um, companies that own real property but also paying taxes and was telling, and then maybe, I, North American Coal, where's their country headquarters?
Texas.
Texas.
Plano, Texas.
They would not be paying property taxes consequently, but that's obviously, I would imagine a pretty big chunk for your.
It's a huge chunk.
So actually, the, when we talked about the severance and the coal conversion, that is in lieu of property taxes. So they don't pay a property tax, they pay those severance or conversion taxes instead of property taxes. So their property is not figured into our evaluation.
But what is that conversion, I mean, that piece is also being pre-identified by the.
Correct. So depending on the determination of measure four, if property taxes were removed, then I would expect all the mines and plants to petition to no longer have to pay severance and conversion because it's in lieu of property taxes.
What percentage of that is that, are we to run?
Oh, what do you say, forty percent?
Taxes, the severance taxes in lieu of sales tax, the conversion taxes in lieu of property tax.
I believe information we got yesterday says, what, eighty-two percent of the money that gets paid in taxes comes from out of state corporations? Right, Michelle, you looked at those posters enough, so it should be embedded in your brain, but, yeah. I believe it's eighty-two percent statewide of the taxes that get paid are by out of state corporations.
It's not only keep in mind, it's a nightmare. You know.
We're looking around home.
Yeah.
It's worth the struggle. It is, it's worth the fight to make the state work up the money. They got all kinds of low revenue and they are basically hand over, but you look at their numbers and where they put that money and stash it, it's just unbelievable. Unbelievable, hundreds of millions of dollars. We've got fifty, what, fifty-three counties?
Yes.
And what's our, what's our, our annual, uh, revenue in, in Mercer County here? What's the bottom line figure for annual, for tax receipts now?
Just want a total revenue that we're expecting? For twenty-three?
Yeah, we do. Can you have a notebook thing here? It was in latest. Okay, here's the total bills. I think it's just the revenue.
These are all.
Oh, I see.
These, these are here. We'd have to dig out a calculator, but our actual revenues for two thousand twenty-three, just for the general fund alone, were six million seven hundred thirteen dollars.
And I guarantee you that oil revenues, they have plenty of it. And they just need to pump it back out there and help these oil companies build that infrastructure. Now, I'm a trip. When I went to your guys' website, all the houses that were hit by Vanguard, so, so to speak, there were like a six-page PDF right up on your property right now. You go outside that area, look at the PDFs, there's amazing on anybody else's home. All you guys out there included. How's that thing about, I mean, it doesn't seem like that's a fair shake. I moved out of this part of Vanguard today.
So there's actually two systems that we're working with. The Vanguard includes the properties near the lake and all, and several of the cities, I can't say all the cities, but that is in this year's budget to get everybody on one system. So if you are in the area that has already been incorporated in a Vanguard, it's on the website. If you're not part of that system, it's not on the website, because that gets updated by the Vanguard.
Vanguard already reassessed the city and all that?
No.
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 They're working on it.
We gotta, we gotta wait, brace ourselves for another hit.
Uh, we all have the Vanguard never, never lived in a lake before.
They didn't go in my land.
They didn't go in the deep homes of, of our region. They just walked in on the other side and came with them.
Okay.
But there's a big difference in the use of those houses.
They don't have the bedroom number, right, online? They don't have the construction material correct online?
Okay, well, I mean, that's definitely stuff we'll have to look into. Um, that'll be part of the, bringing all the other parcels on, but Jen that was in here, she just became our tax director in March, April? Yeah, so, I mean, she's been in the department for a while, but she became the director, uh, just this spring. But, um, as far as the assessing goes, um, I think by law, your home is supposed to be reviewed at least once every five years. I can't tell you when those were done, um, but that's, I know last week they were out actually looking at some new construction to, um, determine values on it, so it's being looked at, um, and it's a process. But you guys have definitely good, um, comments and perspectives for us to be looking at. And as far as, um, the values, when Jen or her staff reviews them, um, if there is something determined where it should be lowered, do you can do a tax abatement for, is it up to three years?
You're gonna have to ask Jen on that, but I know you can do an abatement and you have to bring it to her attention.
Yeah, and there's a process for it, but.
There is a process, so give Jen a call and she can walk you through that. Unless you could, have you could, well, nevermind. But yeah, I talked to Jen.
Yeah.
And I know as far as Pik City, Golden Valley and the rural areas, Vanguard has started. I talked to them not so long ago. We put aside a hundred and thirty thousand last year and they started it, but they can only do, it's gonna take a while, two, three years. And then at the end, we're gonna get how much it cost us and stuff and when they finish.
Yeah.
But that's when you'll see that. So.
And I can ask the board, please answer those questions about how much of that extra revenue and non-normal revenues left and where it's allocated to, because that, you have your special meeting for the budget and it could affect the bottom lines this year.
I agree.
And certainly expect that public to have some input because we're at the end of our time. That, um, we were able to attend that meeting and we might get to ask some questions.
Will we see any updates on our taxes before you improve your budget then? Does that create a cost?
Um, I guess, I don't, I mean, a new statement?
I can't rerun, I can't rerun those estimates. I, that's a huge, huge task. It's hours of work and huge mailing costs and, yeah. Can individually do it, like say Rory would call you, can it individually be done versus the whole county? It might take me a little bit, but yeah, I probably could come up with an estimate. You could just call me and ask me and say, can you figure it out? Give me a couple of minutes and I could call you back.
Are there any more questions? And we can close this here. Anyone else have anything to say?
Okay, I would move to close the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting.
One second.
Any discussion? Travis?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
Rick. Okay, well, we can.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
So, what can we, do we want to set a date for? Liza, that works for you?
I'm trying to get my calendar open. Sorry, too many pass codes, just a second here.
Fingerprints. We need to have this.
By the tenth.
Pardon?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so you guys are talking in another profession, right?
Yes.
Right, we're looking for a date. We don't know yet.
Okay.
Waiting for the schedule to be.
I brought my calendar.
Okay, finally got her open.
When is Jean, well, Jean's on a plane right now, so.
Yeah, he said he'd be available tomorrow. I can do tomorrow morning, I can do Friday, I can do Monday morning.
Do we want to look at it evening?
I can do it in the morning, but I've got to be out of here by tomorrow, I can, by ten o'clock or so, I gotta.
Yeah, tomorrow I'd have to leave by ten too.
Tomorrow's the only day that I, I got my mom's doctor's appointment, so.
I'm pretty open. Friday, I just have something at nine.
So would it be worth, an hour's worth of meeting tomorrow, just to kind of hash out comments and make another decision for another meeting or?
Kind of go through all the updates and put in the budget and decide what you need from us to help you make your decision.
Yeah, I don't know if we necessarily make a decision, but.
Monday or Tuesday evening or something?
Yeah, I know for sure I can't, Monday evening.
Yeah, Monday night, I'm out, but.
I won't be late. Tuesday, I have airport boarding.
I'm making do it hard, I just.
I know, I'm, yeah.
Tell the evening meetings and.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with.
Evening visitors don't show up, so then it really doesn't.
Right, Thursday evening, I'm tied up until probably ten PM. Don't really want a Friday evening, but I'm going out of town. But I'm.
With a hot date or something.
No, I'm actually gonna see my parents. Dad's had some health issues, so.
Are you Friday morning available?
Friday morning, yep.
Friday at nine, I have something going on, but after that, I don't got anything.
What time for you from Friday?
At nine, I have something going on.
But I mean, what time, can we start later on? Ten or eleven or?
Yeah, I'm, I might open otherwise. I just, at nine, it'd probably be till about nine thirty and then probably take me a little bit of time to get over here, so ten would probably be realistic.
It's like ten would be, I'm thinking ten or something like that. That would work for everybody.
If we started at ten and we didn't have the, uh, as long as we had the quorum, we could start and then if people were a little bit late, it would be.
Plan for Friday?
I'm going to that.
What do you still think you're having? Another, I mean, tomorrow, first, then the one on Friday morning?
That's what I was just gonna ask you.
Yeah.
Because the thing is, once you have one, if there's stuff you want us to get ready, if you have to give us some time to get ready. Whatever, I don't know how it's gonna go, so.
I mean, I, I think, well, I'd like to leave by ten two tomorrow, but I mean, if we did a nine to ten tomorrow and then.
Eight thirty?
Or eight thirty would be fine too.
I just have to transport in the afternoon.
So you're taking eight thirty tomorrow, figure out what changes we need to do. Karen can work on the changes and I'm meeting you on Friday. Is that what I'm hearing?
Let's try.
I just want to know.
Yeah.
We gotta work on our changes or whatever and then she'll have time to implement it.
Okay, so tomorrow is eight thirty AM.
Correct.
Eight thirty eight. Okay, and then Friday, we're gonna start at ten.
Okay, anything else we have in there? I don't see any. I don't see anything.
Do we want, do we want full packets printed? Now make note, I just want to let everybody know that five hundred is over, a lot of it was budgeted. So, but I'm game. But the thing is. It's hard to approve something if you don't really have it.
The little picture.
Yeah.
So this, this tomorrow.
Just the strong page was helpful, so.
But that's just the changes we made, but yeah. The thing is, yeah.
Well, this one should be out for tomorrow, we worked, we worked the change.
Well, you guys tell me, what, what are you thinking? Because where we're at right now, I mark it, um, nine twenty-seven. That's where we put all the information requested. Don and I went through, updated the numbers that we needed to update. Shall I do a full copy of that? And that's where we start tomorrow. And then that way, you guys can mark and then we can just print out changes only after that? I'm, I'm looking for a baseline where we can start.
I think that would be a good start.
I think we should start there, uh, complete, um, printout of what we've, um, have current and then any changes would just be updated.
Data tomorrow. Okay. Today, whatever.
But then we also need the, the extra funds that we had due on the house bill, fifteen oh five and ARPA and all that.
Okay, now that, um, I believe Donna has already started working on that and gave you some of it. But I'll, I'll let her know and we'll work on that, but, um, yeah. That's what you want to know is all of that, so I'll talk to Dawn about that. And then we'll have that. Right now, I got.
Eric, Kamara has a question. Mark has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My request to have that information prior to continuing with the budget might not be realistic. Do what you can, you guys got, but don't let it die, get it? Not too far in the future, but get what you have and then so you can move forward with this budget.
So in the last, last meeting, you printed the year to date or whatever amounts, we had that handled.
Yeah, that's right. And we also had.
Okay, now, are you talking the transfer sheet?
No, not the transfer sheet.
The transfer sheet is showing those funds that used for the road department.
The funds, um.
Infrastructure, eighteen, fifteen oh five, we've got those for this.
We're talking that lumped in one that's like.
Oh, yes.
Six pages.
Okay, I will have a brand new one for you, because we just finished.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the one, because that has all the funds broken out.
For the end of this month.
What's received, what's spent. Yeah, that's the one, because that has all the funds broken out, what's received, what's spent, to that deed.
Yes, I like that one, and financials.
Yep.
Marvin, was there any other forms that you were aware of, obviously you had a different auditor, but was there other forms that were printed for you guys as the board that you feel would be helpful for us as a board?
I'll have to go back and look, but I don't think so, the budget that you guys are using, that started three years ago.
I did have, I did ask her to add some columns. Yes, and I haven't looked at it a ton, but it looks more helpful just because it's all on one page.
Have you looked at?
Moving through transmittals and stuff. But I, I.
Got better information than we, it's grown, it's improved, I can't think of anything else. The wheel legging table, that's really important, transfer table.
Yep.
Yep.
Transfer fund, that's very cool.
Yes, it is.
So, that's the way to do it, shoot from the gap and I can do.
Right, yeah, not to put you on the spot, no, no, and then, yeah, so you've got that, and then Jean did ask for this one that I sent you regarding what the mills, the values are and the revenues, so I actually kind of like that one. That hasn't changed, do you guys have a copy of that, do you want that included? And then that end of month, and then it's twenty-seven. No, I don't, that was on your email, I didn't make a copy of that today, I didn't, I didn't want to confuse the issue, I tried to just stick to what we got.
Well, it's twelve thirty, even numbers, we can adjourn the meeting.
Oh, good, okay. Twelve thirty adjourned. Okay, quick, remember, you're not going to leave.
I'm always waiting for.
Oh, yay, okay, let's go to the day, see you all tomorrow.
Yep.
You, well, you get to sign.